13th, 2020, planning board meeting. First off, look for a motion to waive reading of the remote.
So moved.
Any discussion? In favor, roll call. Dick.
Aye.
Tim.
Uh, Tim Norwald, aye.
Uh, Marilyn.
Aye.
Uh, is Sean there? No, no Sean. Norm Anderson, aye. Okay, uh, first on our agenda is minutes, I believe, on the
September 22nd, and I'll move to accept the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, I have what I feel should be one correction. It is on the third page, I believe, in the minutes, under marking property bounds. It says the board review how other surrounding towns handle marking property bounds. Says Norm particularly like Spencer's method, blah, 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 and so on. Says Norm noted that the bounds being used in subdivisions now are usually, are not usually accurate. I think that should mean adequate.
Yes.
Not accurate. Actually, I believe they are probably accurate.
They're on a plan, better be.
But I like your word adequate.
Yeah. And that's all I
Got it, Norm, I'll fix that.
That's all I have on minutes. Any further?
Nope, I didn't have any comments.
Oh, okay. All in favor?
Chris Williams, aye.
Tim Norwald, aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Norm Anderson, aye. Okay. Next. Let me see. Notices, we have a couple of notices from Holden, Horrison. I guess that's it. Any interest in any of those? No comment?
Could have been, need to see, uh, Gartner. Do that one.
Missed? Gartner?
It's on the back.
My Gartner, excuse me, Hobson.
Oh, yes, yes.
Thirty-eight, uh, thirty-six guys in a row.
Yeah. So. Also, sort of. Yeah. Going to compete with, uh, uh, having a brain deck, our other builder, um, who's here? Yeah. Compete with Dave.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, and ours, we have none. Next item, Maple Hill subdivision administration. Uh, we do have a report from Quinn on, uh, Maple Hill. Uh, little looked it over, I didn't see anything that struck me as needing
This is just knowledge, I'm curious about, I, I noticed on the second, the 25th, um, they're building houses, but no electric, no stormwater, and no sewer. Is that common? Can they do, I mean, I'm sure it's at risk, right? Is that what?
Oh, yeah, obviously. It is. But he has a summer extension permit, I believe.
Okay. Uh, so as long as the permit's in place, that's fine.
And, uh, you know, you know, considering basically to get electric in there, he has to wait for national grid.
Yeah.
And at least from what I understand, that can be interesting.
Yeah, okay. I just was curious, because I look at this and like, there's no utilities in.
Yeah, well, obviously, no, I
Oh, yeah, 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 I just was wondering, I thought the utilities had to be on the road before they could start construction. That was my only concern. And I, nope, okay.
No, if you can start putting a foundation in and you can do stuff without having electricity and water stored there.
Okay.
You can phase out your projects accordingly.
I just was curious, because I, I, I don't remember that ever happening before, usually all the stuff's in before the houses start. At least in subdivisions, I remember. That's okay, just curious, no?
I, I couldn't imagine anyone closing on a house until all of that is done. But then again.
Norm, the only other thing, uh, was there that the stormwater basin finish grading has not yet taken place. I'm just hoping that the fact that this was September, that maybe it has been finished by now and seeded down. Because to me, for that, it's late in the season. And we start getting storms, uh, you know, like usually we do, or October, end of March, October to November. The rain starts coming in.
Well, yeah, and grass stops growing.
Yes, exactly.
However, up until this rain came, grass wasn't growing much either.
No, it wasn't.
What, I, I guess the last thing I had to comment is, you put this figure one in there for slope along southern side of roadway, but I didn't see any comments about it, so I was trying to figure out what, what was the purpose? That was the only thing that threw me for a loop. I see figure one, slope along southern side of roadway, but I, and I went back through it twice, and I'm like, either I'm missing it or I don't see it in their reference, so I was curious what it was in there for.
It did, it's a grass starting to grow on southern side of the roadway. The photo of the slope can be seen below.
Did I?
That's the second, uh, I believe, the second, uh,
Yeah, the second bullet point under September 25, 2020.
Oh, I was looking at, yep, yep, I was looking at the, uh, the, um, yeah, the dark bullets when he spoke with Tom Larson. Okay, that's what I missed. Okay, good, thanks.
Good. Okay, uh,
No, just a quick one on Maple Hill. So we got some feedback back on the tri-party. There were some minor comments. Uh, those comments have been distributed to, to Cleve Blair. We're looking for him to mark up, uh, page one and then submit the document again, so that it can be signed by everybody.
Okay. So that doesn't sound like much.
No, it's pretty minor, I think.
Yeah.
This is the conservation restriction, right?
No, this is the tri-party agreement relative to building construction and the cost estimates.
Oh, okay, I'm not familiar with that, that's why, sorry.
Anybody have anything further on Maple Hill? No? Onwards. Uh, to Bryce Lemon. Once again, we have a report from, uh, Quinn Engineering. And I guess the was it in this one, or was it in?
The one in September 9th through the 11th, Norm, I was concerned because it looks like, um, Carl's fielding questions. Am I reading that right?
Hmm.
In the first paragraph?
Wait. Oh, September 9th.
It says 9th through the 11th, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It, it looks like he's fielding questions, and
Yeah.
I, I really, it, it, again, when I read this, I was like, it's really not his how do I say this? I'm being, I'm being a project manager. We're not paying him to field questions. I know Carl, he'll just answer them.
Again, it's nice to have somebody with that knowledge.
Oh, if you, yeah.
Speak to the people, but I don't know if he's okay with it.
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm getting at.
Yeah, well, he can't go up there in secret.
No, 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 I just want to make sure that and I like his comment, he's, the office, the office role with the board recommends to resolve issues resolving constructions on the lots with developers, so
Yeah.
I, I mean, this report's great, because it's keeping us in the loop. I just don't want him to sort of what I'm looking for, be out there on his own.
No, that, that is, that is correct. And, and I don't know, he might just, uh, I don't know. If we want to just send a quick message to him, uh, that, that we we do feel that he is under no obligation, let's say, you, you know, to address concerns from the lot owners.
We appreciate it too, that if he's going to do that.
That, you know, that, you know, if he wants to, can, okay, but uh, he can also choose to simply refer them to us.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chair, if I may suggest that if he does answer, that a copy of the question and the answer go to the appropriate board in town, whether it's planning or Concom or Town Minister, whoever the question's related to something in the board, that a board has jurisdiction over.
Yeah.
So I ju, I would just ask that he do that, so that everybody knows everything is being discussed.
Yeah, that doesn't sound like a bad idea.
And he, and he stated it in his first paragraph, he said, uh, both emails were related to previous identified runoff concerns on parcels 49 and 51, so he stated on here what, what the emails were about.
Yeah.
And then he replied to them, so he's, I like that, that he's, uh, like I said, looping us in to make sure we know what's going on.
Yeah.
Now, question, uh, to everybody or whatever. Why is it that I always thought, uh, that I'm, I'm down on September 14th?
Yep.
Where the, in his opinion, one inch thick coat is too thin? Why is it that I always thought it was three and two? Three inch base and two inch top?
No. That, I, I, I know it is not that, I don't, I'd have to look it up.
But one inch was, it was never one inch.
Well, uh, that's, I guess, I, I is the one inch in this report? Is the one inch measured, mentioned in this?
Fifth bullet. Yeah, it's the fifth bullet on September 14th. By who's James?
Oh, okay, one inch.
James. John Mooney, okay.
What was I gonna say? Uh,
It was thicker than that, I can remember other subdivisions.
I, I keep, I keep thinking an inch and a half.
Yeah, but Carl says, I told him that this is the pavement thickness required in the regulations.
Yeah, well, and I, I'm sure he looked it.
Yeah.
Uh,
Is it in ours? Uh, we, I thought we had it listed out.
We, we do have, whatever the requirement is.
Yeah.
I don't have them in front of me, so I can't say, I don't know.
How much?
I think that is something is worth our review in subdivision regulations.
Oh, yeah, no doubt about it.
So, uh, Dave, if you can make a note that, uh, as we're starting to talk about subdivision regulations, that that would be a point to review.
Yeah, check rates.
The, uh,
I do believe that, um, the product that's coming out sometimes isn't as well as it used to be. The, the change.
That I don't The ratios?
The ratios, very much.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's a good question.
We may have to go thicker and not for something to last longer.
Yeah. Well, I, I would have, I would have to assume that a thicker coat is going to last longer.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says near, uh, and that, it's a, and I would let the board know that a larger thickness may result in a better finished product.
Mm-hmm.
So Carl's even agreeing that we probably should take a look at our regs.
Yeah.
And, uh, maybe adjust.
So. Anyway.
It looks like, to your point, Dick, that the core samples came back and made the regs.
Yeah.
And, uh, okay. I did, Norm, get a, get feedback from some individuals that, uh, um, Mr. Larson's doing an incredible job at keeping, uh, his job sites clean and well-run.
Oh, really?
So, yeah, when I see Cleve, and I give him that, that, uh, that he's doing a heck of a job. I don't know what other feedback's gotten, but that's what I've gotten from people in town.
That was mentioned on our sidewalk, Peter, wasn't it?
Well, Charlie?
About them keeping trash and everything picked up.
Yes, they did, did, Tom did make a point of saying that he was trying to get better at that.
Yeah.
Trying to get his sites better, I should say.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd heard that from some people in town, and I just wanted to know, Cleve, that don't let this guy go. Hang on to him.
I didn't quite pleased that cows, you know, are eating on, um, really putting it out there, keeping track of what that could be taking care of.
Yeah, when we get to the 25th, Norm, that's where let me just say, it looks like the train goes off the rails.
Well, we, we better talk about that.
Yeah, I was good with his report up to the 25th, I liked everything. They started reading the bullets, and I'm going, oh, no. So.
And I'm going to assume that all, most of these places would just reason recently hydroceded now will have a chance to start growing a little bit. There, there wasn't much happening on that. You know, the strip between the road and sidewalks.
Yeah. But these, uh, bulleted ones, I presume these will be ones on the ASBILs that would be brought up that are deficiencies. I presume that's why Carl bolt, uh, bolted them in the
For them to fix it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And then my biggest pet peeve is at the bottom, right after the figure, still no certification on that retaining wall. That's getting old. I mean, hold on, we've asked for that, I'm shooting from the hip, six or eight months. Six months at least.
It's been a while, that's for sure.
And, and all I guess when the ASBILs come in, if they're not there, we just basically, that's a deficiency. And no, no road approval until we get all the documentation. Am I correct, in that way?
Well,
I'd say you're right.
Okay.
No, no, no approval until everything's
Okay. All right, I just
And including the rail trail.
Oh, yeah. Thirty-six percent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's like three times the legal limit for some people to drive bad.
Uh, you're talking about the rail trail here?
Yeah, I, we skipped over it. I know we skipped over that second bullet on the second, on the 25th. Because I know Dave had sent email, an email that came out, and I read that. I read, uh, in here also what, uh, Amy came back to us with. Um, we want to talk about that one now? For the rail trail or?
Yeah. Uh, just a couple of things on the rail trail. I had both, uh, talked with Mr. Blair and with Tom, uh, just for your information, uh, DCR was out, we did a sidewalk last Friday with, with Peter, and I went along on the sidewalk, and we acted like mountain goats up and down the hills.
I drove it this weekend, and I would just like, there's going to be some people in some really good shape out there, if they walk in place.
We, we walked perimeter.
Oh, God.
And then up the hill. God. My hips knew all about it. Anyway. Uh, when we got to the rail trail, I know, so I noted this as well to Tom, as well as I had previously to Cleve, that right at the beginning of that connector, right where it comes off of Woodside, it is right next to the detention pond. And there is, I'm going to say, about a one-to-one slope, forty-five, from the surface of the, the interconnection down into the pond, and it's just fill.
Yeah.
And I told him, that's got to be stabilized somehow. And he agreed they would take care of it. Okay, so that, that's my
Is that, is that what, uh, Norm, that, uh, Carl's talking about with this thirty, oh, that's a different place down the, oh, okay.
Well, I shouldn't say that.
Because he, it's, he
Well, you know, maybe
I, I think that's the exit from the burn onto the access to the to the rail trail.
Okay.
I think that's, that's about thirty-six degrees, it seemed to be.
Okay, all right.
The end of where they
Yeah.
grow.
Oh, so it's like this coming down?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, the, the way I'm kind of looking at it, number, number one, he said that they pretty much had to just end it that way because of where DCR's property starts.
Yeah.
It's like right at the property line. Or very, very close to it, at least. I think he said he would, he could take a look and see if he can go any further or not, but I don't think so. Uh, the other thing is, uh, this steep slope is a recommendation from ADA, not a requirement.
Oh, it's not a requirement? I thought it was a requirement.
No, it's a record, he even stated in there. And Peter, you kind of confirmed that.
That is my recollection of ADA. ADA doesn't have strict requirements for trails.
Oh, it's only on sidewalks and
It's only on finished unnatural surfaces.
Okay.
Unnatural?
Yes.
So Phil would be
Well, Phil is, but actually, yeah, even Phil is, it would be, would not apply, because it's, it's rocks and stuff. So you couldn't get a smooth surface, you are never getting a wheelchair down there. And if you got it all the way down, you would talk about people with strength to get back up that thirty-six degree incline? Yeah.
Wow. There was nothing he could have done to take the slope over, uh, like a twenty-foot
He's restricted by all the wetlands, by the detention pond, and by DCR property line.
Okay, that's fine then.
So, you know, it's I don't know, maybe try to get him to do something.
But if he
Then why did he go through wetlands in some of his subdivisions? Because that was where the, the cat trail went up to the gravel bank, was through there, so that's an already existing alleyway. So if he can do it in subdivisions, why can't he do it there?
My, my next question is, would we have had this kind of slope if it went over by the pump station and around?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. I just was
On the property lines.
Yeah.
That's okay, I just all right.
And anyway, that, that's just my take on that sort of thing.
When he's, when Carl says defer to the board, is he looking for us to make a uh, that's what I'm looking for, uh, a waiver or approval, or just?
Just either, either say, okay, we'll
Okay.
Go with it, or no, we want something changed.
Well, it sounds to me, constructibility, there's no options.
Not much. The, the, about the only thing is I think Tom did not know exactly where the property
That is correct, he did not know exactly where it is.
So, you know, if the property line is another six feet away from the end of the trail, then they maybe could put in a little bit more and make it a little bit less steep. Are they going to ever get it to the twelve percent? No.
Oh, no.
It would not happen.
Was there any hurt to ask him if they could verify that? It's thirty, to, to your point, Peter, thirty-six percent. You, you're not getting anybody handicapped up through those trails. That was sort of the I mean, that's why open space is there for everybody.
It's great for little kids and billy goats.
Yeah.
Is there any other design that could happen? If this goes to the edge and then turns goes down?
Could he put in an escrow in?
Could he gone back twenty feet and started move it over the edge or drop the whole thing down?
Then he's too close to wetlands.
Yeah.
Yes.
How tall, how tall is the bank in that's on the detention pond? Is it?
Four feet, three and a half feet.
Hmm, at least more.
That's forty-eight inches.
And when the project is done, will it come down?
No.
No, I think it's going to go. No, it should probably stay right where it is.
I'm assuming that's finished.
Yeah, there should be finished, right?
I, I, I guess what I'm just asking is, can Tom, can we either request Cleve or Tom to just take a look and see if if they have the ability to take a little bit more out by moving it over some, if, if they can get the actual property lines? I guess, I, 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 I mean, I could
Let's try to work with DCR on it, too. Maybe they would, you know, help us out.
That's not a bad idea to ask them. Is that something, Peter, that that you've ever had any experience with them?
I have.
Usually they're pretty strict.
I have a great river advisory committee. So, you know, let them ask me, you know, can I talk to DCR? I'll be more than happy to go up there and talk to them.
Well, what now, what, what's his name from DCR was there? We looked at that.
No, that was DEP.
Or DEP.
Gary Delman's a DEP guy. I know too many letters.
Yeah.
Accrimination. Dick, I just think it's worth, because you basically eliminated anybody from using the rail trail, because they can't get up on it. Because it's just two feet, uh, from the handicap perspective, not saying
Well, yeah, from a handicap perspective, I, I just I, and, and I'm not necessarily trying to advocate, but I, I, certainly, we can ask, there's no doubt about it.
Oh, I, i- if they say no, I'm fine with that.
But I just take a look at how many of you have walked the walking trails in, uh, Highlands of Glare Farm.
You mean the ones like this?
Just stumps in the middle. And, and, you know, you couldn't bring a baby cap
Yeah.
along those trips. As a matter of fact, I will almost make a bet.
They're impassable now?
You can't even find them.
Yeah.
You know, so
And that's supposed to be handled by the homeowners agreement, correct?
Not by the town.
Okay.
The town is supposed to, you know, fix it and then build the homeowners.
Yeah.
But I think that whole thing is, uh, needs to go to court.
Like I say, you know, we, we accepted that, and maybe hindsight, maybe we shouldn't have, by the same token, uh, we would be placing a very, very different burden on this one. We did on that.
Yeah.
Very good. That's just my opinion.
I doesn't, I don't think it hurts to ask, I just don't know what we need to do. Is that, Dick, you talking to the DCR, or?
Well, I, I just don't have, uh, Tom get a hold of me, he knows me. It's dealt with him.
Should we?
With his father, got me started, and
I guess what I'm looking for, Norm, should we have Dave or somebody send an email to Cleve?
Send an email to Cleve to just take a look, see if there is a little bit of additional room to be able to grade out that slope.
Yeah, that's all, that's all I asked for. If he says no, then the next step is to talk to the DCR, and if they say no, it, it stands.
Well. Okay.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I think, uh, we have a hearing scheduled for seven, six fifty. I know there's more items from Bryce Lemon. You want to take those now or come back to those?
Uh, yeah, we definitely do have more to talk about on Bryce Lemon, so. Okay. Uh, 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 um. Where? Where is?
I have the folder, I'm sorry.
Okay. Let's just quickly look at the notice, I've got all the rest.
I only have a small version, sorry.
Ooh, that is small. Okay, so let's, uh, open the public hearing uh, on the application of L. Bag Brothers an application for a special permit for a common driveway An application for a special permit for a common driveway, uh, serving, I believe, three lots.
That's right.
Uh, at one ninety five Campbell Street. Uh, and you have the plan, and I believe a copy of the application in front of you. The application, I would say, is complete.
But, uh. Isn't there a section here about zoning bylaws being followed? Am I correct? Yes, seven A.
Seven A.
Uh, it says, please indicate how, oh, meets the bylaws, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the one. That references our by, our zoning bylaw in this application. It's a design criteria, maybe?
Hi, this is Mark Elbag. I'm on for, uh, for this hearing. If you have any questions, feel feel free to ask.
Well, you just need, you just need to remember that this form to fill out, okay, is a one size fits all form.
Yeah, you're right.
So for something like a common driveway, many of these things, very simply, don't really apply.
Okay, no problem.
Right, and you also have the specific findings of fact for the common driveway specific, which is also part of the packet.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to talk about.
What you're looking for is in there, talks about the five hundred feet. Uh, no more than three lots by special permit, et cetera, et cetera, the, uh. The the form of the agreement for the common driveway homeowners agreement, things like that.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up that this common driveway does not follow. Uh, zoning bylaw, section two, uh, subsection B. So, that's my problem.
What what is that, please?
Um, all lots sharing a common driveway must have adequate frontage as required by the zoning district where the lots are located along a street. As defined in section five of the zoning bylaw, a common driveway shall not exempt the applicant from meeting current requirements for each individual building lot. If if these.
So I can speak to that. These lots have, these lots are part of an A and R that was, uh, formally approved. Lots A and B have two hundred feet of frontage on Campbell Street. Lot C has two hundred feet of frontage on Campbell Street, and also has just under forty feet on Glenwood Road.
But this this, uh, common driveway is being asked for on Glenwood Road. There's no frontage on Glenwood Road as per two B. Where it says, uh, along a street is defined by section five.
Well, I would say Campbell Street is a street defined by section five.
There's not, on Campbell Street, there's not a hundred and fifty foot frontage.
There is two hundred on Campbell.
Uh, is it lot A is the one that I that I'm referring to?
Oh, let me pull this up.
Hey, what, A, A and B have two hundred feet on Campbell Street. C has, I think, over four hundred on Campbell Street, and then, uh.
How does?
Thirty nine feet on Glenwood.
Lot A, at least the plan that I have shows lot A with a hundred and three. Oh, is that, okay, I I apologize, Mark. It's a hundred and three plus sixty seven plus forty seven, correct?
I'm pulling it up now, but that sounds right.
All right, I would just see in a hundred and three. I didn't see the other mark, so I apologize. I am incorrect in that assessment.
All right, th- thank you. Yeah, sorry, I didn't know what you were referencing. Thank you.
I I was curious for the, uh. That is one point that I wanted to bring up to the board. Again, the frontages, I get it, but the way the bylaw reads, I thought. Weren't the frontages supposed to be on where the common driveway was being put on? Because this is on a different street.
Not, no, I don't, there's no mention of that. The common driveway has to be contained within the property that the lot that are, the lots are affecting.
Okay.
That that is, that's one forbidden.
But isn't this getting into the issue where? These lots have Campbell Street addresses, but the houses will actually be associated. Uh, with Glenwood? Isn't that what we were trying to avoid?
So through the chair, through the chair, these lots were issued addresses. I believe they're all. W- we requested separate numbers, but they wanted to match what we did next door, so I, they're, these lots are now numbered one sixty seven A, B, and C.
One sixty seven Glenwood?
Yes, yep. They wanted to, we did a very similar common driveway right next door. You can actually see it on the A and R plan. And, uh, there weren't enough numbers in that case, so we needed to use the A, B, and C. But apparently, um, I don't know if it's the fire department or the town clerk liked that methodology. Uh, like I said, we requested separate numbers, but we ended up getting one sixty seven A, B, and C.
All right. So they're gonna be in Glenwood, but the front, hey, okay, you know what? This is, uh. I guess through the chair, as long as I'm on the board, this is not happening ever again.
Yeah.
Never. So I'm giving you a heads up, Mark. As long as I'm here, this this arrangement's not happening ever again.
Well, the, th- through the, through the chair, this this does meet zoning.
No, it doesn't.
It it absolutely meets zoning. That, tho- all those lots have adequate frontage and aren't constructible.
When when you read our twenty eighteen letter that was put out and, uh, then, uh, do this again or try this again, I guarantee you, you're not gonna get that A and R sign. I warn, I'm just giving you heads up.
Well, I mean, this, through the chair respectfully, this isn't illusionary frontage, and it.
Yes, it is.
Frontage, the frontage can be utilized, but it's it's more cost effective, and to tell you the truth, people really like these cul-de-sacs, which is why we did it this way.
Well, uh, Mark, I'm not gonna argue with you. It's just, uh, I'll I'll refer to, uh, KP Law next time we do this. It's just, that's how I'll end it.
Right.
You are saying that there is reasonable access to these lots from Campbell?
A- absolutely.
Around the edge through the wetlands?
There is no wetlands in those those areas. Th- that's constructible, lot thirteen and lot fourteen.
No, I'm talking, I'm. I'm talking how it's, you're the two lots of the laid out that go way down, uh, beyond Britnall. They go around the whole perimeter of the of the.
That was, yeah, that, that was done prior to the, uh, illusionary frontage, uh, letter.
That is correct.
That is.
That's what we're saying. That'll be the last time you'll see that.
Yes, that's all I'm saying. Yeah, that one.
Yeah.
That's not gonna hap- that's not gonna happen in town again, that's for sure.
No, understood.
Yep, no, that, Mark, thirteen and fourteen, or thirteen, I apologize. I thought there was only a hundred and three, and you are correct. There's over two hundred foot of frontage, so that was my mistake.
Yeah, I I, uh, when we, that discussion, I thought you were talking about lots thirteen and fourteen. That's why I said that.
No, 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 no. I I was talking about the Duch arms.
Yep.
And, uh, um, the other one, uh, just says Elbag Brothers, that one. That's that's the ones I was trying to say, and then the other. Large lot, we we've just tried to get away from that. No, these are. The the only problem I have with thirteen and fourteen is that. Their frontage is on, is on Campbell Street, but their address is gonna be on Glenwood. That's the only problem I have, but if if the town's fine with it, I'm fine with it.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we've been, we've, in the bylaw committee, we've been discussing how things are, how how addresses are assigned. And at the end of the day, the addresses are assigned by, although the current bylaw says planning board, that doesn't happen.
Yeah, I know.
And it's being changed to town clerk, fire chief, and assessors working together to figure out what the right address is, but.
And anyone else we can rope in.
That too.
Okay, good enough. I'm good. That's it.
Okay, uh, any other comments from the board on this application?
No.
Is there any here, anyone here from the general public that has any comments or questions?
No raised hands.
No raised hand. I hear nothing.
Four hundred and ninety feet. Is it five hundred our max?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay, uh, with that, not hearing anything else, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, before you close it, Norm, I just, I have one question for David or somebody else. That four ninety that I looked at, it came off of the, um, wall. Doesn't it come off where it where it enters the street? That was my only question I had. I I I wasn't, see, on the, on the plans, it's got the four ninety being.
Be from the edge of the right of way.
Yeah. Okay.
Also, the the property line as well.
The property line's out, out at the street, isn't it?
I don't believe, no, no.
No, not.
The property line.
Oh, the property line is that line that's going through the stone wall, and I can't, I can barely see. Okay, good enough, thank you.
May, may, maybe if Mark could just, uh, could just verify that place?
Yeah, yeah, so that the wall is the property line, that's edge of street line per the zoning, and I I showed the dimension to the back of the cul-de-sac, even though. You know, the driveway for the last house is a little bit short of the back of the cul-de-sac, so I think it's, I think it's safe either way.
Okay, good, thank you. I appreciate it.
We do have a hand up from Jess Marinelli.
Jess, you have a comment?
Um, I I just had a question. Were you saying you're gonna close the meeting?
The the hearing.
The hearing.
Just the hearing part.
Okay, okay.
Meeting will continue.
Okay, I apologize, sorry.
Okay, once again, do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Good.
None. Roll call, vote.
William, aye.
Tim Narvald, aye.
Marilyn.
Aye.
Norm Anderson, aye. Sean still not there?
Still not here.
Okay.
But with four of us, that's people majority for the special permit, correct?
Yeah.
So we're good.
Yeah.
All right, excellent.
Uh. Are we ready to grant the special permit?
I, any issues? Yeah, yeah, I'm ready to.
Do I have a motion to grant the special permit?
Uh, where is this? Um. Yes, I make a motion to grant the, uh, special permit for common driveway on one ninety five Campbell Street.
And I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? Silence. Okay, roll call, vote once again.
Dick Williams, aye.
Tim Narvald, aye.
Marilyn Sedody, aye.
Norm Anderson, aye.
Excellent.
Uh, there is an appeal period for the special permit, so, uh.
Is it twenty days?
Uh, twenty one days, I believe. Right, so. It will be be a while before you actually have the permit in hand.
Mark still there?
Yep, thank you, folks. I appreciate it.
Great, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Great, take care, Mark.
Take, thanks, Mark, for answering all the questions.
Bye bye, good, thank you.
Okay, um. Back to Bryce Lemon. I think.
Boy, before we say that, Dave, do you need these back?
Um.
This was stamped.
I'll take them. I think I have enough, but I'll just take them. If I don't, I'll recycle. Thanks. Great, thanks.
You make a little bit lighter going out of the building.
Okay, um. Back, back to, uh, Bryce Lemon, which I guess, well, we still had not quite finished the, uh, Quinn report. Uh. I think we came, we came to a consensus on the rail trail.
Yeah.
So, uh, the next thing's coming up. He talks a little bit about ho- house construction in page two. Rest of this. And obviously as.
And I apologize, Norm, the place that he put the diverter, that's phase two, correct? He put that diverter in the road to.
Yes.
Is that, I didn't save in here on the phase two comments, have they, because didn't we ask them to stabilize it and try to? Eliminate all of that runoff?
They are. I can keep track of what what they said, because this was brought up at our sidewalk. Uh, they're gonna install an additional drain up near the top of the cul-de-sac. Uh, they are going to. They're gonna do down on the lower part of the road. They're gonna camp the road, I believe.
Correct.
Uh, a little bit more.
So it goes into the drain?
So, so it goes more as you're coming down off that cul-de-sac.
Yep.
So more to the right.
Which were the drain, where the one drain is right now?
Rain is.
Okay.
It's not going there now.
He's got the diverter getting it to go there.
It doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
It just goes right over?
Pretty much the time, one, with any heavy rain, yes.
Okay.
But they, but they know that. They're actually to camp the roads because to get to, there there is a drain on each corner. So they're gonna try and, well, first, they're gonna, as Norm said, they're gonna put in the new storm drain with a waterfall kind of. It's gonna be double size, collect a lot of water, go underground and go into the. I don't even, go into the storm system that way, so that way, much more of the water doesn't get close to Woodside.
Okay.
For the stuff that does get close to the Woodside, they're gonna do the road a little, so that, uh, sorry. So so that the water will go better at going into both of them, and I think the long term.
Like Palmaguss, it's gonna have like a little rise.
It'll have a higher crown.
Yeah, crown, thanks.
And if necessary, he said they would also put in an additional drain on the opposite side of Woodside.
Of Woodside, if that's, that's, yeah, well, next resort after the drain and the, and.
Can't leave.
The drain is gonna do some, dealing with the road slow and pavement is step two, and step three is. Put another storm drain on Woodside.
So does that mean he's gotta rip that road up to put in a new crown, because he's gotta have new base and all that?
I don't, I think the plan is to not near. I don't know how they completely avoid it on Oakley. Because the the it's going to go from the new storm drain underneath the road to the. To the, to the drain on the opposite side, because that's the way that that the natural slope goes.
Okay.
He's gonna have to tear up something in the cul-de-sac.
I would think he has to do that. I know he said he's gonna go, he's gonna tear up grass to get there, and that's part of it, but it's. Either I misunderstood what side of the road he's on, or he's gonna have to dig some concrete.
Okay.
Or dig up some blacktop.
All right.
Doing on the other side of of Woodside should not require. Destroying the crown or anything like that, because it's gonna be on the far side of the road. He'll just have to run probably near the sidewalk in the, in the right of way still, but he'll just run it there, I would think, to connect to the next downstream one.
See, I I I I have never watched. Paving, you know, with any degree of. Accuracy, but I am assuming that these paving machines.
You can set them.
They can set them so that one side is depositing more than the other side. So that that's what they're probably talking about.
Yeah, they did that on Palmaguss, except it was to this side like this, and to this side coming the other way. And the crown is all the way up here, and the rest of the road sinking down into the sides in the right of way. Hopefully, I I remember as being just here for a couple of years telling Carl, get that crown out of that road. I mean, still have a crown, don't get me wrong, but not a six to eight inch, twelve, yeah. But hopefully, uh, this time I can talk to Chief Buckley and try to resolve that a little bit better. Anyhow, I'm off. Anyhow, I'm off on a tangent. Sorry.
So, anyway, um. I don't know, I'm kinda going over onto the last page of the report. And, uh.
That's what we were just talking about, that first bullet on the top page?
Uh. No.
That's a different one.
That's a different one. And, uh, if you believe the misspelling, it's a different road.
Yeah, I said Woodsy.
Woodsy.
That should be Woodside.
Uh.
Carl's spell checker's killing him.
And anyway, uh, his note is the office has not seen an updated design plan, and neither have we. Nope. Uh. So.
So, so does this mean you put down the project? And take it off the, uh, structural town meeting?
Yeah.
I, I honestly, with, with as much that has to be done in this meeting, less than four weeks out.
Yeah, well, we're gonna have to, we're gonna take a look at that once we finish with this report too.
Well, that was gonna be one of my questions after reading this, Norm, with, with a lot of these issues in here. Wouldn't, as a planning board, expect some type of addendum to some, I'm not saying he's gotta do the whole plan. I'm okay with addendum or revving up drawings that he's made changes to. Or, or are we just gonna wait till the ASB build and then put Carl through the loops of going through everything?
No, 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 no.
And I, and I don't think that's the right way to do it.
Uh. But let, let, let's just take this apart a little bit. This stuff has nothing to do with phase one.
Yeah, this is all phase three stuff, correct? Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, you know, we need to keep those things separate.
But even on phase one, there's a couple pages.
We, we, we don't know exactly what is on page one, and that's what we do need to address.
Okay.
Uh, at this point, the select board has forwarded Lee's application to us. Uh. Quinn Engineering has the ASB. Uh, so among other things tonight would, it seemed to me to be appropriate to have them start reviewing those ASBs. Yeah, uh, and I talked a little bit with Dave about this. Uh, I realize that time is very, very short. Uh.
Is it too short?
We're, we're not, we're not gonna skip anything. By the same token, uh, and this is a big, big thing to me, uh. I never see a good reason for. We need to operate as fast as we can do things correctly. So with that, uh, I feel we should start at least setting up uh, a date for, among other things, a final inspection. That will include members of the planning board, Quinn Engineering, Joe Buckley, probably Blair, uh, and so forth, so that we get some dates now.
Yep.
And that, right now, kinda hinges on Quinn Engineering. Because until we do get their final report, there's no sense in doing it. Or their, I won't call a final report here.
Your report.
Close to final.
But, I mean, to be fair to Carl, even when he's going crazy trying to get stuff done, it's usually two weeks to get something pulled out. That puts it in the middle of November.
Wow, two weeks.
Yeah, you're right. But, but we won't meet until the second week in November, so. If he gets it done by the twenty-seventh, but that's, that's two.
Twenty-seventh of October is when you meet.
That's right.
Yeah. Other thing on this whole thing is, well, it's our final inspection, whatever it is, that's gonna have to be a daytime thing. Uh, we're losing too much light at this point.
Yeah.
Uh, to be able to do it in the evening.
And then the other thing, Norm, that I'm struggling with is Amy's letter about this waiver and a hearing. How are we gonna pull that off in four weeks?
That, that's, wow, that's another topic.
I know. I, I just wanted, that, that, I don't wanna get into details of it right now, but that's a key component to getting.
Well, maybe yes, maybe no.
Yeah.
Uh. So, y- y- and like I say, you know, that's my concern. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm not advocating Mr. Blair. It's just that, you know, if it can be done and done correctly, we should do it. If it can't, well, okay, we can't.
Mr. Chair, so just to, um, just to follow up on this matter of the street acceptance request, so we, planning board got the official submission to it from the select board on the eighth of October. That was after the town council had reviewed it to make sure it was good working on it, technically speaking. So do I understand that the planning board wants to authorize Quinn Engineering to start its review?
I would say yes.
I, I agree, but.
Then if they can have to review by the next meeting on the twenty-seventh, that would be acceptable?
If, if not before, if he can't. And, you know, again, we're not gonna, uh.
Well, Mr. Chair, the warrant closes on the twenty-sixth of October.
We'll never get it done.
So if you're not ready for it to go on the warrant by then, it can't go on the warrant. I think.
I.
Can they put a placeholder? Because I know they've done it before.
It could be done as a placeholder, certainly.
The la- again, the, the, the last time this came before the select board, they would not place because they were concerned about the, I don't know how rational a concern it is, but he was concerned, that the concern was that the floor could still vote for action even though the recommendation was no action. So.
Yeah.
I don't know what that means to all of you. I don't, I'm not trying to influence what you do. I'm just saying the warrant closes the twenty-sixth, whatever that means to you and your timelines.
Well, a- and we're going under presumptions that that report comes back clean. I, I must, on, on history, I'm gonna say, how many times has that happened?
Not, you know, not frequently. And the, the only thing I would say about this one is it's not there.
Yeah, you're correct.
There's no doubt in my mind. And I, I don't know, obviously, I, I spent more time in Bryce Lemon than I think I have in any of the subdivisions.
Yeah.
And to be perfectly honest, we think it looks pretty damn good. You know, I, I don't see what looks like major problems.
Trees are planted. I noticed that.
Trees are planted.
My drove through.
Not cracking. The berms aren't all turned up, turning off.
Yeah.
So I just wanna check on a date here. So, so the select board refers the petition, the layout plan to the planning board. We now have that. And then the planning board has forty-five days from the referral to, to make its report. The report is done as part of a public meeting to review the plan, the letter, and the, the special, and, and the special permit decision and the subdivision decision. So are we shooting for a date of October twenty-seventh for that meeting? So that we can schedule it accordingly on the next agenda?
Even can happen.
Yeah, he said forty-five days up to.
Yeah, the planning board has forty-five days from the date of, of the referral from the select board to the planning board to make its review and have the, the public meeting to make its recommendation.
Which is way after town meeting.
Which is way after town meeting.
But to, to Peter's point, it's a, it's a moot point, even if we meet on the twenty-seventh, because the warrant's closed.
Well, and.
Well, depends on what's left.
The warrant is closed on the twenty-sixth and the warrant is posted on the twenty-ninth, because that's the only way to make the schedule.
Yeah.
And so the select board would have to meet between your meeting and the twenty-ninth to finalize the warrant to post it on the twenty-ninth, which is a Thursday.
So there is some time that we could still.
I'm, yeah, I'm not saying it can't be done.
If they did a special meeting, that's the only way this could happen.
I, yes, that's correct. They have to be willing on the twenty-sixth to have a special meeting, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Well, I, I think, you know, we talked about Barry Hill in the prior go-on on this, that the planning board, we appreciate the help of drafting the procedure relative to street acceptance. And the procedure had timelines out, four, six, four to six months out for some things, then other timelines that you get closer. So that was done deliberately. You know, we have the request formally submitted to the planning board on October eighth. There are other timelines, but we should act that are, are outlined in the statutes that pertain to street acceptance, which is.
Well, and, Norm, that, that's my tough part here. It, it's not that I wanna hold anything up. I don't wanna ever be construed as that, but i- i- we're trying to push something through in four weeks, and I, I just think it's too short a time. That's my opinion. And, and we don't even have the report back. The other thing that I wanted to mention to you is, before we even start this with Quinn, do they have the latest drawings?
That the ASB.
They do, so they've got the ASBs. Okay, all right. I'd like to have, you know, when he can, yeah, okay, okay, good. I just didn't know. Because I know we've got various degrees of this plan to us, and I didn't know, and I know in the past I've seen reports from Carl wondering if he's got the latest plan. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, before we get started, we run him down the path that he's got the latest and greatest.
He has the ASB now, and another two weeks will be another ASB.
Yeah, well, I, I hope that's not the situation, but anyhow, that, that's the only thing is I don't wanna get Carl started down the road and to Dick's point, another week, oh, I got some updates of the drawings, because that's just, it's not fair to Carl still trying to do it in two weeks.
Something like that happened. Yeah. The, the, the other thing is I hesitate to give Carl any kind of a deadline before.
Okay.
Then I will just indicate to him that the board's authorized him to start his, Quinn's review of this matter and not.
Well, you could. You know, we, we, we could mention that there is a town meeting coming up on the seventeenth. Twelfth.
Yeah.
But beyond that, no. I, I don't think we have ever asked him.
To jump through hoops? I want it to be thorough, but if he can get it done, great, but it needs to be thorough.
Well, he will be thorough.
Oh, I know he is. I just, I, I just don't wanna try putting him under pressure to try to rush through something. That's why I'm guessing I'm getting away from it. I don't.
Was what?
The plant or the, the cul-de-sac?
Oh.
No, that, that's the next discussion. That's why I don't think this is gonna happen, but.
I, I always settled on this timeline.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so let's move onward to, yes, the cul-de-sac. Um, and I'll put it very, very bluntly. I'm kinda changing my tune.
On what?
Uh, I don't know, uh. I may be the only person in Rutland that's in favor of planting in the middle of the cul-de-sac. I like it too, you know?
Well, I, I, let me rephrase. I, I feel that something like that can bring the neighborhood together.
That's a good point, Dick.
It could.
I've seen that in my old subdivision.
Create arguments.
Yeah.
No, you can't put your swing set up in the middle of my.
But see, you can fix that by putting a streetlight in the middle of the cul-de-sac.
Or a whole ring of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. The, I think the, the two things that I'm looking at are, number one, DPW doesn't like me. For plowing purposes, probably, for example, fire department doesn't like me. You know, they got a fire and they're gonna bring three or four trucks. I think we have three or four fire trucks.
Yes, we do. Well, it's a maintenance thing too. That's what Gary pulled the one out at, uh, fifty-six and one twenty-two A. Took that up, because it was just a maintenance nightmare all the time.
Yeah.
He cut that whole thing out.
So by eliminating them, a- and I don't know, we have usually been listening to DPW or their request wishes, whatever. Okay. If they don't want them there, okay, it's, I'll say, you know, I'll give up on my beautifully designed cul-de-sacs with rose bushes and.
Arboretum.
Yes, oh, that's one of them. Yeah, rose garden, that's one. Uh, the other thing that uh, has kind of made me change my mind is our note from Amy Questle.
Yeah, that's what.
And that I, I, um.
Gotta follow her.
What did they call it? I gotta find it, if I can find it again. Somebody was talking about it. Uh, field, um, modification or something.
CLEAS for field modification.
And to me, that's field, in my opinion, a field modification is when you first start, when you break ground, you're not knowing what's underneath. But when you're talking about a cul-de-sac and everything else, that's after everything is done. It's got nothing to do with what the earth was underneath, that you have to change your mind. But this is.
I've seen field modifications where you've had to move utilities because of ledge rock and stuff like that. I'm fine with that. But, but Amy's point, when I read this, was like, this is, this is a major change to the plans. It, it's basically going through and eliminating it, so I, I, I gotta agree with her on this. I wanna follow.
She didn't, she didn't, I don't believe she advocated that it had to be.
No, she says in here, oh, Form C can be used, but a modification requires a public hearing with full notice as provided in chapter eighty-one T.
Now, that's if he applies for the label. Thought he did.
So, but if I could, so after that, there was, after that advice.
Yep.
There was by the applicant or the, the property owner. There was a review of the, of the decision of the subdivision, and this condition fifteen was found in there. And the, the applicant, the, the, the applicant, the builder has a, 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 a way that he's reading this such that.
We.
The opinion is that it's a field change, and that this information came about after that advice from town council. Town council wasn't not aware of the condition in here necessarily. Um, so this is new information, so you have the complete, the complete thing there with, there's a copy of the decision. So, um, you have the rationale for it as well, going back to, uh, you know, as we were talking about with the DPW director's inclination not to have him. So. You know, so now it's for the board to this, to determine whether or not it's considered with the condition, whether it is a field change or not. Uh, based upon advice from the DPW director at the time.
But if you read it, that, to me, it still reads as if it was when you first began, not after you put down a base coat and everything else and you're supposed to put something there. That is not a field condition.
It wasn't built to plan, is what it comes down to.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think field changes are that clearly defined. That, that's at least my thoughts.
Well, to me, it's something prior to, you get that high, you know, get that close to the.
It, it's very much up to the individual planning to, to decide how big a change that there is. And I just wanna make my one other point here. Uh, and this is the email about October sixth on Amy Questle.
Yeah.
And her last statement. It says also, if any lots have been sold, any application for a modification requires written consent of the new owners. He would have to get written consent from every single house that he has sold.
Yeah. See, I'm struggling because.
And that, that, that would be, that, that's, that's a pretty, pretty heavy burden.
Well, should have built it to plan then. I, I get, I get. Ah, how do I put this? I get that Gary didn't want it, but if he didn't want it two years ago, that it should have been brought before us if he was gonna change his plan, and he didn't do it. So, you know what? This is the ask for forgiveness after the fact that I'm just not apt to do.
I can't take it as possible, but we also do have a letter from Clay. It was a memo sent to Gary.
Oh, we do?
Which. Well, depending on how you look at it. It could, but probably doesn't really mean a whole thing. Where, where is that?
Should be the real, uh, very last page of the supplemental.
I've got things all mixed up here.
Last page, David, of the one that you gave us?
Yeah.
Okay, here it is from February sixteen. It's on the back. Yeah, but this was for Stewart. Yeah, but this was for Stewart.
Yeah, but there's a bullet in there. The first bullet.
Yeah.
I haven't found it yet.
Yeah, but it says all cul-de-sacs will be without landscaped area with pavement across the entire.
But, two, there are two things about that. Number one.
It's not signed by Gary.
No, 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 no. Who is it from?
Oh, it's from Gary.
No.
No, it's from Clay to Gary.
Clay to Gary.
Yeah, so that doesn't.
So, you know, that that that's problem number one.
Yeah, because we we would have to have a response, Norm, from Gary saying agreeing with these forwards, correct?
Yeah, prob- problem number two. Is no, no matter what. DPW director does not have the authority to make a change like that.
To a plan.
So. You know, in a way, it's it's kind of almost a little bit of evidence, but it's.
See, I I go back to Amy's and maybe I'm reading this wrong, because she's pretty explicit. Hi, David, he needs. Not should, not maybe, to seek a modification of this subdivision pursuant to Mass General Law, C forty-one. And eighty-one W to remove this. To remove this requirement and be granted a waiver, so it's not saying maybe, you know, you guys think about it, it's up to the board. She said needs. And that, to me, is has to be done from an attorney. It's, and and maybe I'm reading that wrong, but when I read needs from an attorney.
But, I, yes, that is true, but. I was not aware of this presentation, which was made by the proponent afterwards. Uh, so the, we didn't ask her to evaluate the proponent's argument that he makes on the eighth of of October. This was in response to that information.
Okay.
Of October sixth.
So do we need to go back to her with this, uh, because this was copied to George? With this, uh, this addendum? Dave and Norman asked her. Now, does this change your advice that you gave us on October sixth?
And I guess that that's sometimes is the. The hardest thing is making sure you're asking the right question. Peter, you have something you wanted to?
Well. I was just thinking from a. We go back in time to when Bryce Lemon was put in. If we had drawn the plans. Without islands. That would not have met your subdivision regs. Right?
He could ask for a waiver.
He could have asked for a waiver then.
Yes.
And that's what I think, okay. See, that's. I'm just thinking about what he, when he could act and do what, because. We understand LA, this is the process, I'm not trying to excuse anything. But if he could have asked then, if he knew he could have asked then, I don't know what to say.
You know, I don't even know if we actually had it. In our subdivision regulations. The cul-de-sacs had to be planted.
I'm pretty sure.
Trying to think we did, but. I don't think it didn't there now.
You're talking some prior version of the subdivision rules and regulations?
What what does Bryce Lemon fall under? Eighty-two, ninety-six? Two thousand four?
Two thousand fourteen.
Fourteen? Well, then. Question is.
You know, I I.
I can't say for sure.
If it's. If it was removed before twenty-fourteen. Then he doesn't, then he doesn't need a waiver.
Right.
Because it's not a, it's, there's no, it's just a a change to the plan, it's just.
But I don't remember, remember ever having a, a change of plans like that? Remove it? A public hearing and all that? I don't.
Oh, to change subdivision regulations?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we have. We've changed our subdivision regulations.
Oh, we have, but, but not that, not the island.
That I don't know. That, I I don't. Recollection. I I don't, I don't have our subdivision regulations.
Yeah, and I'm trying to get to them.
So.
Here they are, subdivision regulations.
A- anyway, uh, I.
Open space subdivision regs.
It's reading section seventeen.
Not trying to persuade anyone else, but I am willing to look.
I'm willing to keep them in. He had plenty of time to bring it before us. This is the the last moment. And to me, for ground law, if you want them out, we're gonna have to have a public hearing. And it'll never fall for him to get it on the docket.
The, um. Subdivision regs on the town of Rutland website.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to.
The central portion of a permanent dead-end street shall be vegetated. Plantings may include, et cetera, et cetera.
It's still in.
With approval of the board to allow for snow removal and storage, trees and or shrubs shall not be planted within six feet of the curb. And yes, it is seven G, you're right.
Well, I don't think there's any doubt that it's in the current version of the subdivision regulations. That's why it was flagged by the consulting engineer.
I'm apt. And I know this is delaying, but. Um. To give a specific question. To Amy. Based upon, to David's point. Um, the applicant's. Counter co- counter, I don't want to use. Argument. Do you still stand by your advice? I mean. I I I think that's pretty specific. We're, we're giving her the documentation, review it. And if if she still stands by what we need to do, great, if she's gonna. If if this counter argument. Holds merit and she says it's up to the planning board to make the decision, then we make the decision. I I don't know, am I wrong? Somebody else. You tell me. I just want to make sure. That we've got town council backing us, because that area over there is is touchy to say the least. And since it's in the subdivision. Regulations. I don't know.
May I ask what the process of a waiver is, Mr. Chair?
In order to grant a waiver, you have to open a public hearing for a modification of.
That has to be posted, how long? How much? Two weeks.
So.
So it couldn't be at the next meeting, even if you wanted it.
And not, not only that, you have to be at this point, all of the others have to be.
Yeah.
Which means all the houses that have been sold in Bryce London.
Do all of them or only those on the cul-de-sac? That's probably getting too deep into the weeds of.
Yeah, she's gonna have to answer that one because.
You might need to, but, uh. It. First, first of all, thi- this waiver would be for five cul-de-sacs.
Yeah.
That's number one. But her, again, her email, if you take it, as she wrote it. It says also, if any lots have been fold, sold, any application of a modification requires written consent of the new owners. So that means. Phase one, phase two. All of those houses have been sold.
Yeah, and and that, i- if we went to the step where we're gonna have to do it. I would, I would ask that we. Ask her if it's to. Peter, is it just the places that are affected by the cul-de-sac? Because why would somebody at the beginning of the, uh.
Somebody about to turn off hill.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, you know, that.
That is a legal question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's down the road.
And suppose that is. Could could stand some legal.
But I I don't want to ask the question until maybe we get feedback from her on the applicant's argument.
Uh, we can ask her more than one question at a time.
That'd be a good thing to start writing them down now. Norman did find it, one-inch wear course and two-inch binder course.
I love that.
Yeah.
Does it say minimum?
You know, the same.
All it says consists of one-inch wear course and binder.
Not, not that I want to digress, but. I I'm not sure, but what the idea on planted islands. Didn't come, come about from the Jeff Lacy era.
Very well could have been.
You remember he was advocating minimum. Impervious surfaces.
Right.
He's the one that wanted the eighteen-foot wide roads that you know we can't do.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, probably the idea for the cul-de-sac.
I mean, Norm, I have no problem based upon what the DPWs requested. But the next time we get together for the, uh. Um, subdivision regulation updates, it'd be pulled out. I have no problem, because I I think it's, it's, it's. I'm not pulling the streetlights, I'll flick that till I'm blue, blue in the face, but. It it's basically, we give waivers all the time, so why have something in there that we waiver every time somebody comes to us with subdivision? Makes no sense.
It was tapered to the middle. Lid, I'm just trying to think, the limited impact. Design. Then that would work fine, something like that. You know, instead of strong water having a drainage, just have plants.
Okay, are we going to go back to Amy?
Uh, do we need a motion or do we just need a recommendation?
No, but we need to formulate our questions.
I I think the first question should be is.
It's gotta be very, very, very specific. Not, do you agree because of this new information?
Send her the packet that David gave us and say, please review and advise.
I will send her the packet as a matter of course, can summarize and speak.
How big is that cul-de-sac we're talking about? What's the diameter?
Well, no, number one, they vary. I believe the one on Sedona Circle is a large. And, for example, is it above the hill? Is that Oakley?
Yep. Oakley was small.
Is a small one. As a matter of fact, it almost doesn't look like a. Cul-de-sac turnaround. So, like I say, they vary inside.
I I, we allow that to be?
Well, we approve the plan.
I know it, but, um, that that's not sounding. Sounding good, though.
I I I think, I think we have a minimal.
It's at a hundred foot, I thought. But the cul-de-sac has to be a minimum of a hundred foot. Diameter.
That could very well be.
And I'm saying that. These guys with the trucks, they know how to drive it, fall in snow, and there'd be no problem for them to do it.
Wow.
No, it says the dead-end streets. Uh, without a loop shall be provided with a turnaround. Well, this is. Dead-end streets of a a diameter of at least a hundred and twenty feet at the closed end. If not part of the loop. I don't know if that's considered a cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
Okay, it's a hundred and twenty feet then. So.
Well, I don't think that. Oakley Circle or whatever they call it is.
I didn't think so, but I don't know.
That's a field, uh, you know, change?
Don't get me started. He he just wants to wind me up.
Is it, was it changed on the plan or, you know, should we have it look at on the plan?
I think this is turning into a field of dreams.
Yeah. Well, well, I I guess what. I I mean, you guys can tell me and 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 Marilyn, tell me if I'm wrong, but. We've got a question in from the applicant, which is. Section, or I'm sorry, bullet or item fifteen. On our conditions, order of conditions. Uh, do we just, do we specifically ask her, does this apply to the request to remove? The. Yeah, the planted islands.
My my other. Questions there would be are. Are there or what are the limits to considering field changes?
And what is a field change? To me, for, like I say, field change is when they first start construction and don't realize what's underneath the ground. Not after they brought in dirt and everything else and, you know, they're, they're trying to do. Pull another fast.
Yeah, I I somewhat a- agree with Dick on that. I I get, I get a field change under construction. Because you run into something. I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
But after everything's installed, then coming back for a field change, I'm not buying it. I I'm just. That, to me, that's a stretch on the description of a field change.
Certainly should have happened early.
Yeah.
Hey, guys, one, I'm one of the homeowners, uh, here on Woodside. Um, I I think I posed this question to you guys once before. Is, are the homeowners gonna be responsible for maintaining this cul-de-sac or is it gonna be back on the town?
How's you guys?
We, we have no language regarding responsibility by islands in the middle of the cul-de-sacs. Uh, I think, uh. You can pretty well. Count that the town is not going to maintain them. So, if if there's going to be any maintenance. It it would be the homeowners that would do it, albeit voluntarily.
Yeah, there's no requirement.
I'm, I mean, I I find that to be a huge concern on our end, just because, again, you're kind of forcing us to. You know, to to swallow that fee. Uh, you know, it's something, I I mean, we've already got an HOA here that was, again. Uh, kind of, you know, slid in there behind our our backs. Uh, most of us can actually can attest to that. And we're not happy about it. Um, now, now you're basically forcing. More, uh, more, you know, more responsibility on us to maintain something when it's, it's not there in the first place, so. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a big deal. I I honestly, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support, uh, putting in a. An island in the middle of, you know, and I know you guys brought up the point of of, you know, bringing all the homeowners together. I think, I believe me, I think we're. We're all, uh, we're all on the same page here in the subdivision. I I think everybody talks, so. Um, we're not, we're not worried about that. Uh, we're, we're worried about. You know, the the increase in costs here, maintenance of a retention pond. And now, uh, finding out that we're responsible for maintaining, you know, a rail to rail access point. So, uh, you know. I find it to be bullshit, but that's just me.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, it's either Sean or Carly Mead has hand raised.
Sean or Carly? One of you has something to say?
Yeah, I'm on the same page with Steve as well, and this is Sean Mead. I don't think that it's, it's right to force this upon us if it's not there, hasn't been there. And now it's a field change that's gonna be added.
No, 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 no.
Do what we want with it, once it's done and it's in here?
Go ahead.
I I think a a a big part of this whole thing is nu- number one. Okay. If. We can consider this a field change. Then the islands would not be planted. If we don't consider it a field change. Then in order for those islands to not be planted. We would have to go through a significant process. Uh, with a public hearing for a modification and so forth. And that would, among other things, delay or likely delay acceptance of the roads.
Norm, I I think that, I think that there are other things that are gonna delay acceptance of this road. I I think there's a lot to be. Completed here. I think you've got some serious drainage issues that are actually impacting phase one. That could, could, could hold the whole thing up, uh. So, I I mean, I I think there are other concerns here that that are gonna hold this thing up before. You know, getting a special approval for islands. Uh, I think islands are the least of, you know. Our worries, and I think it should be the least of yours. Just, just me saying that, so it's.
That's entirely possible.
But I can, I can back that as well, Steve. I think that's the least of our worries is. Non-existent island in the middle. The circles we have now, when we're still trying to figure out. The detention pond, the homeowners association, which has been brought to my attention that it's. You guys is, as a board, approval and. It requires you to approve that there is no longer homeowners association. It comes from the planning board and the planning board only. Now, as far as the town accepting the detention pond, it's. Part of the town that has to accept that. Not a hundred percent sure if it's a DPW or the select board who has to accept that land. As no longer being part of. Our homeowners association. We understand that homeowners association can't go away overnight. But mass stormwater and a few contacts have said that it's up to the town and whoever put that bylaw in place to make that decision. I know town council has told you guys that don't touch it with a ten foot pole, but it, it comes back to you guys and that zoning bylaw. Now, I don't know where we stand moving forward. If Joe Buckley is up to taking over that part of the detention pond as part of his MS four certification. But that's still to be further discussed with him.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make a comment. We're not adding these, um, islands. They were part of the original plan that should have been put in from day one. What we're doing is we're, we're either granting a waiver or a field change to have them taken out of the plan. So they were supposed to be in there from day one.
Does anybody have a copy of the original plans? Cause I've asked a couple of people and nobody can come up with the original plans.
Yeah, we do.
We, we've got the original plans.
You're also recorded at the registry of deeds website.
Yeah.
Sean, the, the original plans also didn't include an HOA either. So.
The plans wouldn't have talked about an HOA.
No.
Anyhow, I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make that point just, uh, cause we're not trying to add islands.
No.
We're, we're trying to, uh, um, come up with a request from the, uh, developer to, um, either waive them or, um, field change them out of the existing plan.
So what, what, what's he gonna do? Hot topic? Was he gonna leave it open? Because I, I look back at, uh, our previous, uh, secretary, um.
Lori?
Lori. At the end of her cul-de-sack, there are trees growing up there.
Yeah.
And that could happen there too.
Yeah.
As long as it's not within six feet of the road.
Correct.
So you guys could have trees planted, like Christmas trees or no?
So. So just, I, I have a question. Uh, I live on Sedona Circle. If no one wants the islands who live here, can't we just push a waiver through?
There is a process.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
There's a process that has to be followed.
All right, let, let's, let's go through the process because no one who actually lives here wants those.
Uh.
That would make Amy's, uh, second paragraph quite easy then, or part of the second paragraph quite easy.
We'll just have to get in writing from everybody.
Yeah.
This is one of the interesting parts of this one, uh, for those of you who are homeowners there, is that according to our town council, uh, there, there's something that I would call rather unique process in granting this waiver in that, uh, Mr. Blair, the applicant will have to get written consent from every homeowner who has bought a lot in that subdivision.
Don't worry, that won't be hard.
Okay.
Okay, if you don't think so.
There is another hand up. Jess Marinelli?
Jess Marinelli?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm just, uh, you, you did say with Amy saying that we would need written permission and you, you know, uh, I don't think Blair's are looking to put in these flower beds or whatever you call them in the middle of the cul-de-sack. So I'm sure the homeowners would be happy to meet with the Blairs and I'm sure we can discuss some concerns of ours. Um, and have him, you know, maybe if we can negotiate a couple of things, we'd be happy to sign off on his request to get rid of the, uh, planter beds in the middle of the cul-de-sack. So I think it, it should be pretty easy to do.
Okay, that's, that, that's an interesting concept.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. Um, I, I, I still think we should form.
Some questions, Amy.
Yeah, I just, I, I wanna dot the i's and cross the t's on this one. Especially since she's called out gen- Mass General Law forty-one and eighty-one W. Um, but I know what Dave's looking for. What is our question to Amy? I, I guess, I, I, I don't know how to be specific, but this is my thoughts is that we, the applicant's referenced a section in our orders of condition that he believes covers the, the not going through the process that she suggested. Can she, can she review that and the fifteen? It says actual field conditions may vary from those anticipated. The planning board reserves until itself the right to require additional construction techniques in response to actual field conditions, effects or construction methods, and as a situation warrants. See, I, I, I'm struck, that's weak to me, but.
Yeah. This, this is, if I may. This is not a field change. It was not a change required by conditions.
Correct.
It was a change or conditions in the field. It was a decision that was made to do things differently than the plan said, an explicit decision to do things differently than the plan said.
Yeah, and, and I get the, I, I do. I, I get the letter from, from Clea to Gary. There's no response. Gary didn't have the authorization to make that decision.
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, to me, I, I just wanna, I mean, I, we have to respond to the, the letter from the applicant. I get that. The question is, do we wanna have Amy give us? Pick, that's what I'm looking for. I, I hate to use the word ammunition, but that's what I didn't come up with.
Legal cover.
Thank you. Legal, legal cover to, um, be able to go back to, uh, um, uh, Mr. Blair and George, because George has copied on this too. So.
Sean Mead has the fan raised again.
John?
Uh, yes, I was just pulling up the two thousand, the March twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen plans that are recorded with the registry of deeds. And those do not have, um, circles drawn in the middle of the cul-de-sacks, nor does it mention anything about the grassy circles being in the middle of the cul-de-sacks.
Okay, that's an interesting piece of information. Uh.
Why would he write a letter on twenty sixteen? Uh, two years after it was approved.
Um.
I, I need to look at the plans because there could be Norm in the back of the plans, the details for landscaping.
No. We get a set of plans that's like thirty pages.
Yeah.
They do not file that.
That's true. That's a fourteen page document.
Yeah.
What he referred to.
Then we need to look.
So there, the, the pages that may show those islands may not have been filed.
Okay.
Maybe, it may not be a requirement that those eh, 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 you know, in, in other words, probably they don't file the topographic.
Dick, what time are you stopping up tomorrow with me to meet with David to look over those plans? Okay.
So.
Cause I've gotta go to Holden tomorrow and I don't mind stopping. I just wanna for myself do this, bless it, make sure they're there.
It's on the plans.
They are. Okay, you've checked it, Dave? I'm, I'm sad.
I probably got to this question of for, it started off with the board wanting to know if in fact it was on the plans or not, if it wasn't implied waiver or what. So we did look at that.
Okay.
It's on the plans. That got to the question of getting back to the consulting engineer. Despite having that, no waiver had not been requested.
Okay.
And that has led, it led to the discussion with Nai Avi here.
So, well, e- unless the, unless the board is not amicable, this, this fifteen doesn't float with me. Now I've read it explicitly. I, I think we gotta go through what Amy's requested, but I think we need to respond to Mr. Blair with an answer to his request for a field change.
Well. Yeah. The thing is, we are, don't we also, do we have a formal application for a waiver?
I thought I saw.
No, the, no, I think that's being held because of the response relative to the consent piece.
Okay.
That, that was pulled back in, in, in favor of, of this approach here.
All right. Okay. I don't like having to go through that, but I don't say. I don't see. I don't.
You, you can just.
I think it's the correct way to do, just to dot our i's and cross the t's. That's my opinion, because I, I just don't see that fifteen covering removal of a section of our subdivision regulations.
No.
Just, I don't know. I mean, every other thing, Norman, our subdivision regulations, we've always had waivers for, and, and of course, you know, me, the street life, that's a big one. I mean, it's in there, so we asked for a waiver. The berms.
Yeah.
We've got the, the cape or the, uh, yeah, that's waivers. It's all done at the beginning. Cause it's wa- wasn't done and in twenty sixteen, four years ago, it was known about it. Could have been brought a waiver for us back then. Okay, it wasn't done. Well, now we gotta follow a formal process because these streets are built. So I, I think we gotta walk through the formal process.
Yeah.
Just to, to Amy's point with that, to follow Mass General Law forty-one and eighty-one W.
Do we still wanna question Amy further?
I gotta leave that to the board because now that I've read that fifteen. I, I don't like fifteen. I mean, I guess my, I don't know. I don't wanna spend town money if I don't have to, but in this case, I don't. I, I just don't have a formulated question, well, other than can you look at this and does it apply or not to would apply?
I, it doesn't apply, if I may. The word unanticipated is in section fifteen. This was anticipated. It cannot apply to that.
Yeah.
You've been doing too much zoning stuff.
Yeah, and, and to your point, Peter, I, I have a feeling that's what she's gonna come back and say, and we just paid a couple thousand dollars for that decision. I mean, I guess I'll leave it to the board. Do you think we need to go to Amy? My gut is no. I say no.
I, I'm gonna ask Dave, do you have any, any thoughts about whether we should and what we should ask?
Well, first off, I believe the expense would be from the subdivision account itself.
Oh, okay.
Um.
Oh, well.
One of the things I'm, I'm interested to just nail down is the consent language. Whether that's consideration, considers phases or not. I, I'm pretty sure it doesn't, phasing doesn't matter. And I, it would be helpful just to get some guidance on this fifteen because of, of, of the issue.
Yeah.
So I guess does fifteen somehow nullify, you know, the, the, the ordinary process for a waiver? Um, could this be considered to be a field change based upon the information provided with the caveat that there's no response back from the DPW director at the time? Um.
He didn't have the authority to make that decision anyhow.
No, no.
And would you like to get some language about the extent of, of field changes in general or you wanna let that one be?
I would kind of.
Cause if you were thinking about a topic for the subdivision rules and regulations, maybe it is field changes because.
Two birds with one stone, we get.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we might as well. I, I, it, it, it doesn't hurt to be safe to go to town council to just make sure we got our i's dotted and t's crossed.
The more information we have.
Yeah.
Technically, at least the better we can.
Find out if Amy's ever milked a cow because field conditions, I wanna make sure she was a foul.
All right, I, I think, I think the answer is, Norm, we.
Go to it. We do go to her. But.
And also let Quinn know where this stands, that the waiver issue hasn't been resolved at this point. Because that seems to be a relevant factor for the street acceptance procedure.
Is it impossible? Given that you're not meeting until the twenty-seventh? Is it impossible to do street acceptance?
No. If this waiver is required, then I'd, I'm pretty much have to say no.
No, there's no way because we couldn't get it in the paper in time.
Yeah. We don't, we don't yet have a formal request for a waiver. We can't post it until we get that.
We don't have the response from the attorney telling us go or no go. I, 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 I think, I mean, through the chairs, should we have Dave write Clea a letter and say, based upon duh, 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 you know, uh, we're, we're, we're talking to our attorney for this waiver request. Um, if that is yet, if that is no, the waiver doesn't cite, we have to go through this formal process, which could easily take a minimum of six weeks by the time we get it posted. Um, from today, I'm saying, from six weeks from today, even if we got something back with Amy in a week or so, or two or three days. Um, then we have to post it in, in the landmark or something for two consecutive weeks.
Correct.
And then we've gotta schedule this thing, schedule it. And then we don't know if it'll open and close on that day either. It could get continued. So there's, there's a lot of variables sitting out there.
And we only had what thirteen days, I think you said, or something like that?
Um.
Warrant closes.
The warrant closes in thirteen days on the twenty-sixth.
And it's posted on the nineteenth, uh, twenty-ninth, excuse me.
Yeah.
So it absolutely must be rock solid before then.
In sixteen days, it's not gonna happen.
That's why I ask, I just.
No, you got a good point. I, I don't think, Norm, that in sixteen days we'll be ready. I think this is rushing it. Wait, this is, this is almost as bad as coming to town meeting and going, hey, can you guys look this over and bless it?
Yeah.
We've done that once and.
Hey, here's our free cash number.
Don't eat, oh, don't.
Well, I think this was part of the intent of having the, having this procedure.
Yeah.
You know, we, we go back three to four, three to, well, three months in this case. Some of the documents I looked at, for example, said six months, some said nine. Three is, is less conservative than the other.
I mean, Dave, to be honest.
So three months ahead of time to start to iron out some of these things.
We should be starting the pro- this is the starting of the process for the Maytown meeting to get this thing accepted. That's my opinion right now.
It sounds like that.
Yeah, so, um, that's, that's my opinion. I, I think we should.
And not only that, in my opinion, I don't think it, it falls in our jurisdiction, but I would like to see all the permits taken out properly for the sewer line. Cause does this mean if, if it went to town meeting, the town takes ownership of the sewer line on Main Street coming up?
You know, I, 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 I have no idea. We don't deal with sewer.
At all.
Uh, I am assuming.
But they, they, meaning the town, are they looking into this?
Have to ask.
Because to me, for kind of a lot of, they haven't got everything in, oh, all lined up here. They could be in deep, deep.
They're also be taking over two sewer pump stations.
Yeah. Not yet. And, and back when I used to come to the selectman's meeting and I asked for the permits, I asked Anita, I've asked the select board, I wanna see copies of the permit and never did I ever get one, period. Not even from Mass dot. I mean, it's their land that it was put on, never got it.
Well.
Is it there?
In our orders of condition, it says the applicant shall obtain any and all state, local and federal permits, order certificates a, and license and approvals, which are necessary for subdivision work. If this issuance, said permit, blah, 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 necessary is a change to the defended plan as approved, said change shall be presented to the planning board prior to construction review. So in essence, does that say that we should have a copy of all those to know if there's gonna, if there's any changes happening? I'm just, I'm, I'm going into this a little bit deeper than what it says in six, but it's to your point, Dick.
Yeah.
Says right here, number six in our general conditions, under administrative conditions that shall obtain.
But you can also ask the applicant for that.
Yes.
Cause I would bet if there's somebody who's have it, I would think the applicant would have
Yeah.
the sewer connection permits, the water permit, whatever.
Yeah.
All I'm, all I'm to your point, Dick, is it goes in our book and anybody ever questions this, we've got everything in there. You know, in the, in the front part of our books with the administrative portion, put all the permits there.
Yeah.
So when, when.
The conservation, they have their stuff mixed in with ours.
So when the select board, which I remember the previous select board was always, um, asking the question, there are all the permits there for Bryce Lemon. I mean, who's the purveyor of that? I'm guessing it maybe should be us, since we issued the subdivision.
For sewer and water, it's the sewer and water commissioners.
That's a good point.
That's why I asked the select board, but.
This, this goes back to my question of who, who manages all of the different permits and make sure everything is done. And I've never got it.
That's, that's what viewpoint is supposed to help with.
I agree. I just, I haven't.
I don't know that it does. It's supposed to.
Yes, okay, good enough. Um, I'll be quiet. Next.
Okay.
Did we have enough today to go to Amy? I guess that's my big.
I, I'll circulate questions tomorrow to you.
Yeah.
If you wanna modify it. Modify it.
I feel a lot comfortable, we've also checked that permit for the people that are on here, so we, or the, this plan, so we know that they're on there. They were on the design, the, uh, so. Alright, where are we at?
Okay, are we done with Bryce Lemon?
For now.
Norm, I just have one more question, I think this kinda goes towards you and Peter, I guess as well. On the sidewalk, I know there was mentioned that there was gonna be some sort of meeting held about the discovery of what was seen at the sidewalk, or what DEPs had to say. Is that still in the process of happening, or was the sidewalk the meeting of all the department heads that had involvement with this?
It did not include everyone, I, we have not yet heard back from all the groups to begin scheduling an appropriate meeting.
Okay, so again, there's still open issues out there that would, I guess be in the town's better interest not to pursue the town accepting the road.
Uh, unrelated. Unrelated, we, we have questions we would like to answer and find appropriate jurisdiction in the town government for the issues. That is, this has nothing to do, not, no direct relationship to acceptance of town roads.
Okay, so, dr- town road drainage and stormwater and things like that are an unrelated issue to accepting a town road?
What I'm saying is that the issues we're discussing do not directly impact. It's not that stormwater can't, stormwater management is an issue that DPW considers and ConCon considers. I'm not saying it's okay, good enough to meet, I'm not saying it's not good enough, I'm saying we haven't considered it with respect to acceptance of roads.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that we're, oh, that, that meeting was still in place.
We, we have not held the meeting yet. Now, I doubt DEP will be there, because he was at the sidewalk and we had a nice conversation, but that doesn't mean there isn't more work to do. More issues to, uh, find solutions.
Does he issue, does he issue the group anything like a meeting minutes, so?
Oh, please.
Alright, I'm just, I'm a, I'm a stickler being a project. I want all discussions recorded, okay, good enough, move on.
Okay, anything else on Bryce Lemon? Okay, on to, uh, next is Sunny Hill Estates.
I put this on there just cause I wanted to talk about it, but, um, I think from my discussions with, uh, David, reviewing what they've got. You know, I, 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 I guess I'm okay, I just, the, the thing I wanted to do is if that subdivision, I thought it had a special permit, I apologize. The reason I put it on here is I thought that we approved the, the over fifty-five modification, that they came in with a special permit, and that's my mistake, I did, I was wrong on that. All they did is can't come in and want, want to modify the nineteen sixty-nine subdivision that wasn't completely finished, so, and I didn't know, just from lack of knowledge, that, that subdivision was actually somewhat completed, it was just the back end of it that hadn't gotten done, that was my mistake, so. I'm okay with, with, with what they're doing, it's just, somebody's gotta make sure, and I know it's on the onus of the person buying it, that they're just not gonna go in and build, I guess the roads they can, from my understanding. But the house lots have to conform to the zoning bylaws, so they'd have to combine, do whatever they need to do, to get the forty thousand square feet and a hundred and fifty foot frontage for that subdivision. And, and I asked the question, knowing full well that we've been through the multiple times of wetlands crossings, that the DEP or DCR, I forget which. DCR basically shot down, not only on the original or the updated subdivision plans, but then on the, uh, over fifty-five. So, there's multiple times that they've been blown out of the water, so I, I guess the answer is it's buyer beware, is the only thing I can come up with. So I've sort of backed off, it was a discussion point that I put on, I talked with David, and then did a little quick research on my own, so I agree that I'm fine with what, what, uh, she's oxygen.
To me, the roads aren't completed. Does the town take ownership, did they take ownership of the roads because of the sewer and water lines that are in them?
I don't think so, I don't think there's no.
So then, you know, the people are gonna be involved, it's their responsibility?
Wait, 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 let me think that through. Because the town took possession of all the land owned by the Israelis, and that would have included the roads.
Correct.
Yes, but the roads aren't complete.
No, no, I'm not saying they're public ways.
Oh, okay.
I'm saying only that the town has ownership of the ways.
Oh, okay.
And that will be part of the auction.
Yes.
Yes, it will.
And the people that'll buy it will be buying the sewer lines? And they can turn around and charge all the people a fee for going across their property?
Good question, I never thought about that.
I don't.
Because it's not set up, I mean, I don't think things were, were written up. To me, this thing has been pushed a little bit too hard, too fast, without thinking it through.
Are you saying there are sewer lines on the unbuilt, or on the?
On the, on the unbuilt rope, because there's no sewer pump station to pump it back up on Cheryl Anne. Number one, and number two, I don't know where the right of way of MWRA sewer line is on the bottom. Because if you go to the GIS map in town. You, you will not see any easements on that at all, four, and I don't know if they has a easement, or do they? To me, there's a few things out there, and, and, uh, I wish, I wish the heck Becky would have brought it to the planning board. Hey, what do you think about this, you know, or, or to all the boards?
That, that's more my guess is what I wanted to convey about this, now that Dick's brought it up, is I, I don't know if we need to write her, just a, a note, n- not anything to, to dig, but just say, next time, could you please when it comes to something in this aspect, come before the board and talk to us, because I, only way I found this out was I saw it on the website, that auctions, Zico's, so I went on there and I go, holy Kamalas, Sunny Hills being auctioned? And then I just went into damage control mode, you know, and again, it was my lack of knowledge, I thought there was a special permit, blah, 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 I said, we gotta get this rescinded, we gotta stop this. But then David helped me understand that it was nineteen, that the original subdivision from nineteen sixty-nine stands, and it was an already started subdivision, so this is just a tail end. So, but, I, I didn't think about, Dick, your points, what about water, sewer, and anything else? Who's gonna assume that if they buy that property?
That's correct, and who takes responsibility, you know, if there's a break in the thing? And, uh, you know, like I told you, you know, those are asbestos pipes down there, they're not metal or plastic.
I guess my question maybe would be for Chief Buckley, is, because it's an all tied-in system, correct, it's looped around? I don't know.
But I don't know, do you know? Do we know, have we seen the drawings of it? Does he have an as-built plan?
Of course he does.
Why, he's not done.
Of course, it's not done, but there again, we're turning around and selling it to somebody else who has no idea, or maybe, or whatever.
Mr. Chair, there is a hand raise, has been for several minutes now, from Cheryl Watson.
Cheryl?
I just have a question, um, you know, you're, you're talking, now you're bringing up asbestos and all that stuff. How come this is pushed so damn quickly from the town to sell this, this land that's been sitting there since nineteen sixty-nine? And Norm Anderson, you've been on that planning board that I've been at for years, with my neighbor Rick Garca fighting this this development being built, and the land is wet, it cannot be built on. And I, I asked Becky Tuttle, I think was her name, to purchase a lot, when I found out it was, um, being you know, more closed on or whatever, and she said to me, wait for the auction. An auction now that is, you know, includes twenty-eight lots, well, that's crap to the abutters of this, you know, land. That we just wanted to buy it to prevent building on these, these pieces of land. I, I, and I'm, I'm just disappointed that this is up again and again, you know, and, and you're gonna have somebody come in that can buy that land for cheap, and they're gonna develop this town, we can't afford it anymore.
Uh, I, I guess the, the only thing I can say is that the planning board had, you know, no part in the decision of how to dispose of the land. It's, I don't know, it's, I, I'll, I'll admit, the whole thing is a mess. Uh, it won't matter how you look at it. Uh, but, you, you know, and I'm also, I'm certainly not going to, uh, criticize another part of our government. Or whatever they have done or have not done.
But don't you think that this was moved way too quickly to, you know, for something that the, the town has been sitting on since nineteen sixty-nine? Why all of a sudden now do we have to think about developing on it?
The town only got the, only acquired the land recently. It was owned by the estates of the developers.
Oh, I know, I've been here for twenty-four years now.
Right, and so to say the town had, had the land, possession of the land, is not correct. The town did not acquire the land until very recently, it was unable to do anything with it until it acquired the, the land through effectively a tax taking.
Owners abandoning.
That's right, and, and in fact, this turned into slightly friendlier than a tax taking, didn't cost the town quite as much money as a tax taking. Because the attorneys said, yes, you may have it, and rather than fight, they just signed it over. But having done that, it's still, it's still effectively a tax taking from the treasurer's point of view, and she has processes she must follow to, to dispatch of any excess town property.
Increases our levy and gets it off the tax.
It just would have been nice for the abutters to have a chance to purchase the land, and, and, and asking her, you know, she was like, wait for it to go on auction, she didn't tell us it was gonna go up as twenty-eight parcels all at once. And that, that to me is unfair to all of us abutters that have been here for, you know, twenty plus.
The, the, the only thing that I would say to that is, uh, I don't know, I, I think there, there, there is a, at least a very decent chance that no one will even bid on that whole piece of property. In which case, then probably they will decide to start selling it piece by piece.
A- and Norm, and again, I'm not legal counsel, or I'm not working, or, you know, know what's in Becky's mind, but to Dick's point earlier, I don't think she could disclose it, but because of the town's ownership of the roads. And it being still an active subdivision when it was turned over to, to the town. So, I mean, I, again, I, I'm not an attorney, but I could see what, I can see what she's trying to do, which would make sense for me, is she's got a parcel, and it's gonna cost her money to break it up, dispose of this, dispose of the whole piece of parcel that she was given. So.
Another thing, is there, is there, and would there be some reason to rescind the subdivision?
Well, that's what, that, that was gonna be part of my discussion, but I sort of backed off on it, because.
The buying thing, the town of Law and Turquoise, if what this, it doesn't say, the subdivision should have been ruled out right then and there with the town of Law and Turquoise, period. It's a different owner, it's, they're not out there to, uh, build a subdivision. But therefore, it should be dead, it should be no mention whatsoever in this auction or anything else but a subdivision, period.
Well, he- here's the problem, and this is again my discussion with David. There's a different process in resc- in rescinding a partially built subdivision, as opposed to one that's never been built. Yeah, so, that, that, that's where I think, Nick, the issue is, if this was like that Noble Hill has never been built, it's a no-brainer. But, but this sense it's been partially built, I don't know, and again, I didn't ask David for any details, and I didn't go look at myself. What's it take to do that? It, it, it can't be easy, because it's already partially built. Yes, and that.
No doubt about it, and I think we should have, you know, legal advice right now, because I don't, it is. I think the town's gonna be held liable for, for.
In twenty-two days, this goes up for auction, so, I know, again, I don't wanna speak for Becky, cause I, I'm not, I don't know what's happened, but you know, i- it's going to auction, so.
Well, if I could, according to some of the information that she provides, it would be cost prohibitive to sell in the parcels separately. That there was not sufficient budget for that, that's a letter that she prepared, and has been distributed, um. So, th- there are some rationale, if, if there's a plan, if something needs to happen after this, and that's gonna have to play itself out after November fourth.
I mean, part of it is, Norm, and again, I, I guess I'm not an attorney, but I don't see how she can sell parcels of land that don't conform to our, to our zoning bylaws. They can do that, okay, I, I didn't know that, I, I would think, I, I guess you'd sell it as a parcel that's on, that's, that doesn't conform to, uh, okay.
Is not billable.
Okay, alright. Alright, I just, I would think that the, oh, they're doing it anyhow, because this auction has par- parcels that are in the middle of nowhere. Okay, good enough, just a thought, Russell.
It, it, partially, it is unknown character.
Yeah, we've never done, especially being that it's a partially completed subdivision.
And to me, you know, that's one of the things that, to be on our dock, or dock at some time at a business meeting, if this ever comes up again, I'll just kill it, you know, not be in a subdivision anymore. Things, I think even from nineteen sixty-seven, things have changed.
Okay.
And therefore, you know, it should nullify that subdivision, period.
It, it seems that way, but I don't know if that's what the law is.
It's not, it, no, that's, that's, subdivisions on their own terms do not have.
Expiration.
An expiration date here, unless it was an expiration that specifically went into some kind of performance related to the subdivision, there is no expiration. Whether it's finished or unfinished, so the portion that remains unfinished is still.
But the ownership has changed.
The ownership is immaterial to this, it's the subdivision itself as laid out and recorded on a plan with the registry of deeds, is what the controlling factor is. The ownership in and of itself isn't, the only, these, the, the, that a subdivision is valid survives the change in ownership. That's well established, that's out of the statutes.
I found out.
But the town of Rutland could have killed it.
We don't know.
Yeah.
Could the town of Rutland have killed that subdivision?
I think that's in Becky's letter, what she said, there was, it was, there was a lot of cost involved to do that, and, uh, and maybe I'm putting words in her mouth, but I think that's what her letter was basically saying, there was, to break it up into parcels, there was gonna be added cost.
Well, it would be, it would exceed the budget and the available funds that have been allocated for this land at this point in time.
Individuals, and then, then come, then comes the problem of, what do you do with the roads?
There's too many factors at the end, and that's why it should not be on the list right now for the auction. Until it gets rectified.
Would be one probably call to figure out how to nullify rescinding of the subdivision plan, because even that way, what you could simply do is even take the pieces of the land that were the roads, instead of calling it another parcel.
Oh yeah, move the, move the existing parcel out to the road on both sides and say.
Or just call it, I swallow that stuff.
Yeah.
You know, you want a two-hundred-foot long parcel with a little bubble in it?
If I could also on this, you know, there is about four hundred thousand dollars in, that are taxes that are owed on these various parcels that are subject to this auction, this is a very large chunk of that. As I understand it from the tax collector, if this money is recaptured, that affects the town's, uh, capacity for levy in a positive way, which opens up availability for spending for other things. That the town's CFP has been desirable. So there's financial reasons. Uh, yeah. Also, what's available for the budget at this point? I think you're, you came to me with the questions about the technical.
Yeah.
Questions of is a subdivision still valid? Yes.
Yep.
How could the parcels be sold to such that they might be buildable? They have to meet the current requirements for area and frontage. Um, what is the process for the auction? It's, it's an as-is situation where anybody interested has to do their own due diligence. You had basic technical questions along those lines.
Yep.
And that's what we tried to answer at that time.
Yep. Nope. Dave, you answered everything I was, that's why I sort of said, I, I use the phrase which Sean uses all the time. It's buyer beware. You buy it, you're in, you gotta deal with it.
There's another hand raised from Brian Bjorklund.
Brian.
He muted him?
He's, no, he muted himself. I just lowered his hand.
Oh, okay.
I will ask him, Don.
But our, our squad box is.
All right. Can you hear me now? Are we good?
Yep. Yep. We got you.
No, I, you know, thank you for putting this on the agenda and, you know, I really appreciate that. And, um, you know, we, we just really would like Becky to, to address, you know, why it was rushed so quickly. You know, we have 28 lots out behind our properties that, you know, they're obviously wet. Uh, I have a vernal pool pending, uh, pending approval by the state or certification. And even, even the uplands that are considered buildable by the town technically fall within the 400-foot Surface Water Protection Act. So, you know, I think a little bit more review needs to go into this before we rush into, to an auction in just a couple of weeks. So. And I'd be happy, I'd, I'd be happy to take anybody, you know, on a tour of the properties. I took one of the selectmen out last week to, uh, to look at, you know, all the properties and where the vernal pool is in relation to the rest of the lots. And I'd be happy to take any one of you out there.
I've walked it twice.
But a long time ago.
I walked it in boots last time.
And things change, you know, wetland boundaries change over time. And, um, I know there was a lot of, of, you know, drainage issues in that, in that area in the past. And, uh, you know, that was before we moved to town. But, you know, as Cheryl indicated before, her and, uh, Rick were battling with, uh, you know, you know, flooded, flooded basements and, and that sort of thing because of drainage issues. And, uh, yeah, so.
Brian, I apologize. I haven't looked at the Zico. What was, have you looked at the Zico auction by any chance? I guess I'll ask you that first.
I, I have.
What's the minimum, what's the minimum bid on this, uh, property?
Uh, $10,000 deposit for all 28 lots. And when I talked to Becky before, similar to Cheryl, she had indicated that it would be single lots at $5,000 deposit each. So, and that's obviously not something that's happened.
I, I would encourage, um, i- if the residents want that, um, band together and each throw, if there's five people throwing, because I, I agree with Norm. I don't think anybody's gonna bid it because anybody's been in town knows how many times this has been through the planning board and, and they, with the DCR and it's got shot down. So unless somebody's really inventive and, uh, can do something, I, I don't see this, those properties ever getting built because they can't get a road to them.
Well, that's, that's just it. But there are two properties. One right on, um, Prescott Street and the other one, I think was right beside it.
Right, right beside, in, in between Karen and Prescott at Red Eth, at the end of the Dead End Road.
Those could be built and that was it.
Yeah.
But.
Right.
Properties.
Now, there, there are probably others that could be built.
Yeah.
Right. But they all fall, they all fall within that 400 feet, uh, 2 and 400-foot, uh, Surface Water Protection Act by the DCR. Um, even though the ones along the trail at the end of Cheryl Land, um, you know, right along the water and seweries in line.
Yeah.
So we have, we do have a, a petition going to try to, you know, convince the town to push this off. And, you know, hopefully auction these off as individual lots. We have almost 300 people from the area signed on, uh, you know, hoping that this can be, you know, pushed off a little bit. Um, you know, push pots and, you know, many of us are gonna be in attendance at the selections meeting next week as well to bring this.
Have you, Brian, have you officially sent that, uh, petition to the town manager or?
I have not yet.
I.
Which one?
Well, the new one. He started today.
Welcome aboard.
I was gonna say, you, you could give him a welcome aboard letter, but I'm not advising anything.
Yep.
But yeah, I would get it in.
I, that's what I was basically. Get it in his hands so we can talk to select board about it and see where they wanna go. Cause ultimately the town administrator is the department head's boss. So. That's it. That's all I've got.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I wanted for Sunny. I just wanted to have us have a basic discussion about it. So.
Well, like I say, I still wanna know if the town has, uh, you know, legal rights. Do they know where the, the lines are and the whole line is?
Well.
Honestly, Dick, I think unloading this thing gets them out of the hole.
Well.
They could put them in a worse spot.
I don't know. They're selling it as is.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the only is now if there are sewer lines in use.
Yeah.
Under this part that they are selling.
And the town doesn't own it. Well, they own it right now, but if they sell it, the other people become liable.
I, I just don't know. If the road, if road hasn't been accepted, how can anything on that road be town owned?
It is possible for the town to have accepted the sewer connection, but I don't know. I'm not suspecting they did.
Yeah.
I don't, the thing is, the unbuilt road.
I didn't think there was anything under.
I don't think there was anything under there.
Unless it was.
How, how do they get the sewer up and around?
I have no idea.
It was before U1 system. There's a whole bunch of junctions down at the bottom down there too. Uh, not Blueberry Lane, uh, Dairy Lane or something.
You're near Blueberry.
Blueberry.
Okay. Don't know about that far.
Like I say, there's a lot, lot more that people don't realize, but sometimes us old people know.
No, a- and, and that's why my, my, my request, and I don't know, I don't know how to do this. I mean, just to help, help Becky be successful. Next time something like this comes up, there's an auction, come to the, I'm not saying our board, but the appropriate board. Cause.
Just get it out to all of us. The communication.
Yeah. That, that's, I guess, more than I'm getting at. And this gets back to a communication thing. I'm not, I mean, I guess, David, did she talk with you before this all went to?
Bid? If I could. So there's a statute that pertains to this.
Yep.
Now you have the, for example, you have chapter 61. That statute specifically refers to certain boards or commissions that have to review and make a recommendation. You don't have parallel language in the statute for this. I think you have the letter which talks about the cost of selling separately with the budget that's been allowed. But there were discussions to understand whether the subdivision was still in existence or not. We, we had conversations of those types. Uh, we had town council advise accordingly, whether the subdivision is still valid. And if so, what does it take to build on the lots? Uh, the area and frontage requirements or form that it's the current requirements, um, things of, of that nation.
Okay. She found her due diligence.
So I'm not, you know, I.
No, that's what I wanted to find out.
What, if this could be a process, perhaps that's a procedure that ought to be drafted in a different form that, that would mandate certain things happening outside of the statutory requirements.
A unique situation.
Yeah. I, I, I guess there's, you, you can't put a process together for a one-off.
Right. Yeah.
I get. And David, everything you've said is what I would expect it to be done with the attorneys, the discussions, the towns. I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
With an attorney, really? Equitable?
I don't know. I don't know.
Did she come out here and walk it?
No.
She doesn't have to. It was a, it was, it was a narrow question of the subdivision. And what is, what constitutes a subdivision still being in effect? That is well settled. That does not necessarily involve, uh, uh, anything but reviewing of the case law and subdivision and laws that, that are.
If, if, if they sell this, what, what's gonna happen is it's gonna, whoever buys it better have a good discussion with Chief Buckley. Find out what's under there if they're gonna do anything with it. But again, that's, that's down the road. It's, it's to what David and Becky. Yeah. I, I have a feeling. Well, then he's gonna have, I, I, you know what? It's on my, I'm not gonna tell him what he has to do. Yep.
But maybe, yeah, maybe that's one thing that, uh, Becky should do is talk to him and find out is there something we should do before this goes to auction?
I, I think she did everything legally that she's required. And, and, and I guess.
Legal is only so, so far, but will they think beyond it?
Well, and, and I'm not defending her. I'm just saying that she's only got a limited amount of budget. We, and again, I'm, I'm shooting from the hip. I don't have the exact number. But the last I heard, there was like $1.2 million in back taxes owed to Rutland. And she's, with this auction, she's taken a third off of our, off our auction, off our, what is owed to us. So, hey, I'm giving her kudo for that. Christ, we've had 1.2 million on there for at least three to four years. And that she's mo, she's moving forward, trying to get 400,000 off? Hey, what the heck? I'm gonna give her, I'm getting latitude. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Number nine, Route 122 kiosk.
All right. So a lot of these I have and I'm gonna try to be really brief. I know it's getting weighed here. So, the long and the short of this, there's a kiosk by 122A, which splits off the 122 close to the water. Um, so there's a, a move to update the kiosk and the materials that are there. Uh, the CMR PC has an interest in this matter and they're looking for us to assist. So I'm gonna take a site visit out there. I do have materials that were, that are currently being used. It's a brochure of two pages, which is, it's kind of, it's outdated to some degree. So we're gonna work with them to update this materials. And hopefully we can have a better distribution of this information to other businesses and other places besides just the kiosk. I think that this, this is something that should be on the website and other, other, other locations to help the town's economic development opportunities. Um, so there was an issue about the land use report. Uh, Tim wanted to get a report from the accessory regarding landing chapter 60.
One second. Let me back up to that.
Yeah.
Addison Redfield, Helen Biner, myself, were on the scenic byway when we tried to put this thing through from Paxton out to Petersham. And, uh, the only town that couldn't get us taking care of is Paxton. The rest of them, uh, kiosks are up and everything else and we're going. And, um, now we need to try to get this, where the town takes it over and, and can run it. And, uh, it's, it, it's down there anyways. You know, you can't see the picture faded now. It's been two years. The pictures can change.
Yes, that's right. Thank you for that. The kiosk does pertain to the scenic byway initiative. Uh, they're looking to get additional money to make that a federal designation in addition to being a state designation. And that, that kiosk has information available to the public regarding recreational opportunities, historical opportunities, restaurants and so forth. So it's a vital economic development resource as far as I, I think.
If I may ask, where is the kiosk for Rutland?
Right down at Long Pond on 122 and 122A on the right-hand side. Sitting right there where the road cuts in, you can buy the printing tables.
Yep. Thank you.
And I refuse to go down there and drop off brochures, but I'm, I'm out of brochures. All right.
So the other one, number 10, so land use report. So there was a previous request to get all land from the accessory. That's not, that's a 61 designation. So the board received that as a paper copy. There was a question on whether or not there was a way to capture APR land, agricultural protection restriction, or actually agricultural preservation restriction, or lands with conservation restrictions and to build that into this database? The answer is yes. It's in the open space, a report from 2017. There's two tables. One is APR and the other one is CR. So perhaps that information is available electronically and that could be merged into this. I know that was something that Tim was interested in.
Yeah.
I have it. I'm, I'm the optimal document, so I can get that to you.
Should have talked over this. Should have talked over this.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a pressing issue, but if we could get it as soon as possible.
Have, have you talked to, oh, I'm having a brain death, the young lady that took over the.
Candace?
Candace, yes. Have you talked to her to see if she's got a electronic copy?
On my list.
Okay. Good enough.
On my list.
Cause all I was trying to do, Peter, is get those merged. So, and then like Holden's done, my next step was to talk to who, whatever board to try to come up with. David had a good point of, of prioritizing those, that list. So if something comes up, we can go before the select board and say, this is number six. Let's get the money. I think that's a great idea.
We would kinda maybe make that as, uh, the, the plan being land preservation priority.
Yeah.
Because that does come before the planning board if it's a 61A consideration. So.
Um, okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah. So next one, 11, the agricultural use bylaw was approved by the Attorney General's Office. Um, it's currently being posted in five locations throughout Town Hall. After that posting period, we'll, we'll then for, for the, you know, and publicize this on the Facebook page and elsewhere to let, uh, for folks to know that it's been approved. Uh, the, the agricultural commission is aware that it has been approved. We'll let the rest of the community know as well in time.
Was there any modifications by the Attorney?
No modifications.
Great. Thank you.
Awesome.
Great.
And I do believe it's on their agenda.
Oh, it is. Oh, good. That's great. Um, next item is rural economic development. This is, this goes back a ways. It's early part of the year where the town, working with the regional planning commission, received a DL, DLTA grant to do an economic study as it pertains to the agricultural sector. So that's ongoing. We've, um, notified the ag, the agricultural commission that the CMR PC is gonna be stepping up its work on this project now that COVID is starting to, you know, be more stabilized. So you have that letter in your packet. Um, next item is the town center study. Uh, the town center study, we circulated a, um, we circulated a survey. And we, so far the survey results have been excellent. We've received over 230 people filling out the survey. Uh, the next step is to, is to update the town center study group with some preliminary findings of the study and then go from there to our next steps. Um, Bear Hill in Britnall. The applicant previously sought a waiver from one of the requirements, but has since rescinded that. Having conversations with DCR regarding, um, some of the wetlands crossings. So that's not gonna be coming before the board.
That's great news.
Yeah. I sent, I sent Klee. Congratulations.
Happy on that.
Yeah. Got that squared away.
Uh, next item is time for the delegate, for the delegate reappointment from the CMR PC. Uh, you have that in your packet. So.
Sean's not here, so he's elected.
He is the board of selectmen alternate and he has been reappointed by the select board as the alternate.
Oh, okay.
The, the delegate appointment comes out of the planning board.
That's me. I just want to stay on.
I, I, I am making a motion to, uh, um, elect, uh, Ms. Williams as our official delegate.
All right. Great. So I have paperwork to that, which maybe if I need to have you come in and sign it, you can.
That all I need to do.
Wow.
Just have to vote it and.
Do we have a second on that? Marilyn? Okay. Discussion. In favor, roll call, Dick.
Do I say?
I abstain.
I think it's fair game. If you were to vote, that's not, I don't think.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Norm?
Aye.
You are so deemed.
You are appointed.
You'll be anointed later.
Yeah.
I'm also on the, their executive committee. So I'm down there anyways, their transportation. So it just, everything fits in very nice.
Okay.
Uh, next item, per the board's request, a discussion over the last couple of meetings. You'll see in your packet, there's a revision to the subdivision rules and regulations. What this does is take the town's existing language and take Spencer's language regarding monuments and put those, those two together. So revision is the last section of this document. Um, so the board has any comments or questions or modifications?
Make sure to have any comments.
Where the heck is it? I've lost it.
I had it.
Yeah, so did I.
I didn't think I made any comment.
It should be like item 16.
Yeah, I've got 15 in there.
I got 15.
That's as far as I go, but that isn't.
Actually, I'm sorry. It's in the, um, it's the supplemental.
Aha.
It's in the supplemental.
That I've torn out. I don't know where that might be. Give me a second. All right. There's the CMR PC. Up here's the supplemental. One left.
Oh, here it is.
I had three copies. I distributed to the folks who are here, and it was also sent by email to the others who are not here.
Yeah.
Thing that you handed me was.
Yeah.
Community development.
No, I mean, here's my copy. If you want to use it. I don't have anything to mark up.
Still. Why I would not have.
I think I gave that to you in the afternoon when you stopped by.
Yeah, and I brought that.
Oh, I know. Yeah, I tried to print it out and it wouldn't print.
Right, so I made the supplemental, which that's one of the items.
Thank you.
Think you're gonna have to color code this stuff.
Oh, see, I tore it.
What, you want something like tabs on the side? Tabs? You want a binder, no?
No, cause then you're gonna request an admin. There's no budget for it, so next budget.
A binder with the index.
Isn't as much of this as like for street?
It's in there.
It is in there, okay. Alright.
Yeah, all street or way intersections at all points of change in direction or curvature, streets or ways, and at other points, where in the opinion of the planning board, permanent monuments are necessary.
Alright.
There it is.
The lot in his packet this week was.
Well, yes. Cause I know. I read it at home.
You know what? I could try to find it, apply you electronically.
You know what? I'm just gonna go over to Dixon, look at his, cause I've got fifteen.
He's got it right. Then he can't, he can't mark it up though.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, let me look, try to locate it. Can't find.
Go all the way to fifteen, and then I got all the packets that they gave me on the CMRCP and I.
Yeah, and and that's what.
That's where mine ends, so.
But like I say, I picked up mine earlier and.
I didn't see the email either.
Read it at home and I put it on top of all of the rest of my stuff. So I know it should be here.
Alright, thanks. Okay.
Can't be here. Nope, I got nothing.
I've been through every piece here.
So have I.
So, I, okay. You wanna look at, I I I apologize, but I thought I distributed to you folks. Um, wanna look at it here.
Yeah, I I I know you did, because like I say, I brought it home and I sat it to get the table, read it.
Right.
And put it on top of the rest of my packet.
You know what? I'm just gonna do charter.
I don't see how I could lose it between here and there.
Oh, I got it. Let me read this real quick. Found it. Ten twenty has sent it out, my young lad.
Yesterday.
Okay, I'm good with that. Good with that, four by four. Day one uh, on E, on section E, under B. Go down to the second line after three. It should be feet, not T. Should be a T in there. Right before the, it's a section E, point B, second line of B, it says granite post, three feet, should be feet.
Actually, you want to be further down. I I should have bolded the headings. One is is the Rutland existing. Then this Spencer existing, then this. Revision merges those two above. I'm not able to access my email. I'm not sure what.
The only thing I got in email is the one that says um, Rutland existing. And then revision, there's a revision. Is that the one you're talking about that we're gonna?
Yes, and and there are three headings on that document. I'm showing you what the existing language is for the town.
Yep.
Showing you what Spencer's existing language is, and then the revision is below all of those. That merges the two above.
Okay.
And you would have received that by email.
Yep, okay, go down to the section where it says revision.
Yeah.
And the second paragraph.
Now I see it.
See it?
Three feet, six, yeah.
Yep, that's it. But I agree with the, I'm just doing corrections. Everything I like here. I like it. So this last part revision is what we're looking to put into our subdivision bylaws, correct?
Yeah, if you, I mean, unless you have some other comments.
No, no, no.
I would use that as the working version of this at this point, that.
It's short and sweet. I like it. Well, Norm, you wanna look this over?
Well, I pretty much got in my head what I think there. About ninety percent of what I want to change.
Revision down is what he's he's playing. You can use the fingers to blow it up if you want to.
You can, rest of you can take it or leave it, wha- whatever. Um, under C. Uh, small letter C. Uh, it says monuments at all other locations. Rear lock corner shall be iron pipe, drill hole. Uh, I am going to suggest that we put in a minimum one inch diameter iron rod drilled or driven three feet into the ground or drilled or driven twelve inches into bedrock.
Could I have that again?
Would you say iron rod or would you say stainless steel?
Wow, I'd love stainless steel, but.
Okay, good luck with that.
One inch diameter iron rod, minimum one inch diameter iron rod.
I used to have a lot of bent one inch piston rods.
Yeah.
So it's it's monuments at all other locations. Uh, for example, rear lock corner shall be iron minimum one inch iron rod.
One inch diameter iron rod.
Yeah. Minimum one inch diameter iron rod?
Rod, yeah.
Driven or drilled.
Yeah.
Three feet into the ground. Or driven or drilled one foot into bedrock.
I like it.
Should it be flushed to the ground or should it be a certain point raised above the ground?
Not gonna worry about that, bud. If it's if it's iron, they're gonna use magnetic. But, you know, that'll find us, define. Yeah, okay. Um, what else? That that was the biggest thing that I wanted, obviously. Uh, if you go all the way down, oh, no, this is in. Well, wait a minute. That's.
He's the one that uh, Dave's proposing is from revision on down. The rest is all existing, so he's just gonna put that in there. But that fits in, Norm, with that second paragraph that you were talking about, which you just did, that fits right in there.
So obviously, any uh, reference to iron pipe has to come out because we're doing iron rods.
Yeah, cause if you do pipe and the and the wall is is a sixteen thick.
Yeah.
It's gonna get attacked from both sides.
Exactly, yeah. I I I want something that's gonna stay there for a while.
Yeah, alright.
Uh, what else? And I don't want any uh, mention of just laying drill holes. Cause what what this one is now indicating is that if there's a rock at the corner, they can just do a drill hole in that rock.
Yeah. Nope, they gotta put either rod, they gotta put rod in no matter what.
Yeah.
I like that, Norm, yeah. And if it is a rock there, they gotta do twelve inches drill, put it in, and we're done.
Yep.
So under the language you just provided, the monuments at all all other locations, so or drill holes not? So you don't want or drill hole?
No. But by the way, this is just, these are my suggestions.
No, I don't, I agree. Yeah, so do I, cause.
In the back of my mind, is the is the drill hole, you put the rod in there, is that gonna be good enough? It should.
If you drill down twelve inches, that rod's gonna stay there. I mean, you don't you don't wanna.
It's not gonna work its way out. But I'm just thinking, what if the rock itself that you're drilling is?
But we can put something in there that i- i- in bedrock, it has to be secured into the hole, but that's getting really.
Yeah, that.
Well, that's what I was thinking about.
Yeah, but.
If it's above ground.
I think you get into the weeds when you do that.
I don't want somebody to come by and see a rod sticking in there. Oh, look at this. Suck it out.
Yeah, I can't say anything, I'm onto you. Alright. Okay, excellent, good.
I'd still like to know what happened. That is the most frustrating thing.
Thank you for doing that.
Just like.
Yeah, yeah, I just, that's why when I looked at him, I'm like, hold on, David sent this, and I didn't get to it, cause I was a native. Getting soaked, telling electrician how to wire up uh, a traffic or a gas telemetry cabinet. But again, I wasn't in China, Slovakia, so I'm in bonus land.
Working down cellar, I put down my pencil somewhere, and then two seconds later, I can't find it. I think somebody stole it.
Well, I'll make those edits and then circulate it back.
Yep, that's good, yep.
Yeah. Anyway.
What's the Emerald? Is this the decision that we have to sign off on?
Yeah, that's a decision from out of state law.
Yep. And this is the one I still don't know if it's uh, what part of it is is eight, uh, not eight, uh, sixty-one.
We we got something back from the uh, land surveyor indicating that the lots are not in it.
Lots not in sixteen?
Yeah. I think he may have communicated that to the board when this hearing was happening.
Well, therefore, they wanna see on a plot plan showing where the other six acres are in that in there, in that lot, the big lot. You have six acres of open, you can have six acres of forest. So where in that thirty acres of estate? They wanna put a uh,
You got an estate lot.
Estate lot in there. So if they're gonna use use it that way, show it on there, and that takes it out of there, now they can't put anything else in the in the forest and rain around it.
Oh, you mean the surrounding property, if it's all sixty-one A?
Sixty-one A.
It's unbuildable. Have to take it out to build it.
Correct.
Well, I'm okay with this special permit. Do we need, do we have to, oh, yeah. Damn. How do I sign this on my iPhone?
Master copies right here.
Excellent, do we? We've already voted, so this is just basically approving this document and signing it, correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, you wanna take a look at the decision itself and see if you see any issues with it. It's pretty much standard compared to other estate lots.
You got the standard terminology. We go through the bylaw. I'm good. Yep, I can sign it tonight.
We have a motion to sign the decision.
So moved to sign the special permit decision for the estate lot at zero Emerald Road. I'm leaving hanging peoples. Anyone? Say it loud enough?
Second?
Thanks.
Very good. Any discussion? Roll call.
Dick Williams, aye.
Tim Norwald, aye.
Marilyn Sedoti, aye.
Roman Anderson, aye. And Sean is still not here, right?
But that's still, we got super majority, correct? So we're good. We think four of us can sign this. Okay.
And Marilyn, if you could come in tomorrow, that'd be great.
Alright, listen, I'm look, uh, show up here as a guest, and I don't can't see any of you guys. Is that a correct way to be?
Yeah, cause nobody has their camera on.
No, but I never ever get to see you guys.
Oh, yeah, I don't turn my camera.
Come on to our meeting. Turn the TV on. It's on channel one ninety-two.
Right, I know, I don't have a TV in this room.
I don't have cable.
You can stream it live.
Um, the only thing I was gonna ask you, David, is at the bottom of this document that I got, it says five of seven. Is there another two pages or is that just a misprint?
Uh, the decision, so one, two, three, four, five, six. The decision itself is six pages and the signature page is sheet seven.
Okay, I'm just looking at what I got on my I iPhone and under in the signature page, it says five of seven. Does it say it on yours?
Uh, no.
Okay, good. This must be the way it's presented on this freaking iPhone. I'm good. I just wanted to make sure that was all, that our document was correct when it went in.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, good enough.
Do we have anything else to come before the board?
Actually, I didn't. I just forgot about it. Yeah, no, it wasn't. It was just a question that couldn't be anticipated. Obviously, it wasn't that important, and I forgot about it.
We got forty minutes, they told the wife I wouldn't be home until ten o'clock.
All right, then, uh.
This is my imagination, it was just, things just getting somewhat more complicated.
My, my job is with COVID, it's like.
No, you're not losing it, I think it's all over.
Oh.
More than one way.
You mean I've lost it then?
Yes. Yeah. I had, I had requested a, a sidewalk sometime, though.
I remember mine was, I'll let you finish.
No, go ahead.
I want a plan, a business meeting. That is my request, and it couldn't be anticipated, I wanted to do this within forty-eight hours, cuz I just thought of it as I was sitting here.
Are we supposed to have a public hearing for this bound thing?
Yes.
Yes.
Subdivision changes required in here.
So, a hearing and business meeting.
I, I, I think so, it's just the question is, Marilyn and Sean, okay doing it over Zoom?
Well.
Are they, are they willing to come in, or are they still wanna stay at home?
I'm assuming they still wanna stay home.
Yeah, and that's okay.
I don't blame them.
Yeah, cuz COVID isn't over yet, now we got flu season coming on.
No, that was not only, not over.
No, with the summer.
It's ramping up, but no, that's why I'm going on vacation in, uh, a week, and I'm not excited about it, but it is what it is, I have to get on a plane, I haven't been on a plane in a year, so refreshing, I don't even know what Logan looks like anymore. Now I have to get on a plane with people in a confined space for an hour and fifty minutes.
So, you started?
Yeah, I did. I was requesting a sidewalk, but you are, you, and Peter did a sidewalk down at the Bryce Lumen. And, uh, I, I was phase three, was the more important thing that I wanted to take a look at, make sure everything is hunky-dory, and where I thought it was fifteen, excuse me, fifteen percent grade, I noticed that in the regs, when I was just reading, signed it up, but the hot top, in there, uh, twenty percent. Anything with twenty percent banking, you only can do X number of feet of roadway. So, and, and they went and did the whole friggin' thing, yeah, so. Well, I guess it is what it is, but I, I feel that we need to have a few sidewalks before winter, you know, comes in. I don't know about the rest of you, but I always like to have a, in the back of my mind, visual contact of what it looks like and everything else, so when we talk about it, at least I've got an idea of what that good is and where it is and all that.
Phase one, that I drove through this weekend, I was, I was, other than little things, I thought it was in pretty good shape, it's phase two, I see as a winter wonderland.
Yeah, good luck to those people.
Yeah, phase two is, is, wow.
Yes.
And I, and, and part of what I was gonna say is, is, that was the other comment I got about Tom, Tom Larson with phase three, I've gotten positive comments of him keeping a clean job site, running it well, interacting with the department heads, being, um, Chief Buckley, keeping him in the loop, just it's all positive comments, so I just wanted to throw that out there, Clay, if you're listening, good job.
I'm kind of surprised we didn't tune in tonight.
Mr. Chair, I have one small thing the, yes, board may be interested in, uh, Dave, I'm gonna steal the share from you.
That's why I'm, I'm done here. I'm gonna stop sharing, so.
Uh, I want to do that one right there.
I like it, looks like my little trip to Bermuda, except the sand's not pink.
Just a second there, so now you guys in the room can see me, Zoom's been able to see this, so. Related to the upcoming auction.
Yes.
This highlighted section of land.
Uh, it's eighty acres, it's all Holbrook Swamp.
It's seventy-one.
All seventy-one.
And it's lots of swamp, and so Concom was asked, hey, do you have interest in this in being, basically the conservators, and there were, Becky saw problems putting it up for sale in the auction, or actually, the auctioneer did, thinking that if they auctioned this piece of land, then it will actually drag down the prices of everything else.
And so it's not in, it's not in Zico's auction, if I'm not mistaken.
It is not in the auction.
Yeah, I looked.
And in fact, Concom has said we'd like it.
And so does Joe Buckley, cuz Joe Buckley and I already had a discussion about this.
Oh, I've heard about this.
Yes. Uh, this is Muska Park Brook that's running through it.
Yep.
I own a, a piece of this land. And you're not gonna be able to get to it, the, originally, you used to be able to get on it right in here. But for some reason or other, uh, the, uh, the census maps and, and the real thing, two different things.
Well.
Um, and also in nineteen sixty-one, pine crash here, and, uh, the three, uh, people died.
Well, that's interesting.
And, uh, we won't go any further than that, but. And also, when, uh, when they brought down the back hole, that's when Wayne Royce came out with an extended hole, that's how we, uh, tried it out for the first time, was digging out the aircraft. And whole peat moss.
Really?
So that thing has a lot of peat moss in it, anyways, with Mr. Buckley, I was, I think the town should own it, number one, because of the fact that it's next to Quiniparks Reservoir, which is one of the fastest regained reservoirs that the city has, the water comes in there quick. That if the town of Rutland needed a, a water source or something like that, or, or, uh, an addition or something to the health, it's a prime thing right here, and not only that, it's not that far away from their pumping station, and he claims that the pumping station was from the shaft. And I, I don't know if it is or not, but hey, uh, it is what it is.
So Peter, at this time, the town owns that property, correct?
Town owns it right now, and the town is going, town is gonna continue to own it, assuming the select board goes along with the Concom recommendation, now, there is access, there will be access to this property.
Oh, you go down the railroad track, and jump over?
Nope, cuz right here across the Princeton line isn't any bitty piece of property owned by the town of Princeton, which connects my prop, that property to Overlook Road.
Uh, if it's in Princeton, the Old Mill Road. Yes, and the guy right beside it has got, uh, like five, uh, five lots that he'd been trying to get the town to sign off on, and, uh.
Oh, boy, okay.
If you've ever been down there, you, don't take your car, because you'll never make it.
So, I'm just saying, this is, so this is another, another property, not going for auction, gonna be owned by the town, under control of the Conservation Commission.
So when it comes under your control, Peter, that means it's perpetual or town?
No, no, this is not a CR, it's just owned by the town.
No, no, when I say perpetual, you, you, if the town wanted to sell, they'd have to come through the Conservation Commission to make that sale, correct? Okay, that's what I was worried, that's, I'm worried about wondering.
And I'm happy.
Yeah, me too.
Because, uh, my biggest thing, you know, for all my, all my life almost here, um, wildlife quarter, and that's, that's up to me as.
This is gonna maintain a wildlife quarter, there is a possibility, though, don't think it's a high possibility, being able to put in some trails, walking trails. You might know if that's. We haven't evaluated the.
Up in here, but down in here, where the Brook goes through and heads for the reservoir, I believe there was an old grist mill way to hit back.
Oh, wow.
So, and it's just over, over a bank, and for granted, it isn't that far away from that area.
So which barn do you have the, uh, Piper Cup stored in?
All right, I'm now, why was that screen sharing paused, I have no idea, but.
Oh, that's good to know, I did see that Becky's auctioning off these little parcels in the middle of nowhere, and I get it, get them off the roll, I get it, so.
I, I brought in, on Route sixty-eight, I noticed a, a piece of land for sale up there, a house for sale, and the town owned, and I handed it to the secretary, and I also told the, um, chair, the select board, you know, you ought to go up there and talk to them and, and see if they could, you know, wanna buy it for, you know, a few bucks or whatever, and then they would own it, but I noticed the sign is down now. I don't think anything was ever done about it, it's too bad.
Uh, you gotta change that thing out.
And, and have wetlands on it, because.
The host is no longer.
You're not gonna be able to build a house on it, but the people right next door might have liked a bigger piece of property.
Yeah, the host has turned in all of his equipment, he is no longer an employee of the town of Rutland.
And yet, his name will last forever.
Yes.
As long as we have Zoom.
Oh, because he is the account, oh, he was the account.
He's the name on the account.
Okay. Oh, good.
So.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Said motion, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, I, I like to drag this on for another, uh, twenty-nine minutes, so Dick doesn't get in trouble.
People in the back room are screaming right now.
It's past my bedtime, Tim.
Oh, sorry.
I forgot about.
The little one's already asleep.
I know, and now mom's almost asleep, too.
Marilyn, your vote?
Aye.
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 Okay.